Good evening Wakefield. I'm Mike McLean, Wakefield Town Council Chair, and I'm going to call to order the Wakefield Town Council meeting of August 12th, 2024 at 7:01 PM. I'm going to ask everybody to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see from attendance that we have six of our seven town councilors here tonight. Councillor Butler will not be able to attend. Next item on the agenda is item four, and it's employee recognition. And we don't do this every day, but we don't have a, the head of our fire department reached 40 years in service every day either. So we in town council thought it would be a good idea. We've always known the chief to be a humble man and not to seek any accolades, but we couldn't let this meeting go by without recognizing his 40 years in service, 16 as chief, and a long family history of service to this town spanning so many decades over the years. I'm going to, I'm not going to belabor the point, Chief. I'm going to note that Chief's wife, who is in attendance tonight, is son Patrick, and our provisional fire chief, Tom Purcell, is here tonight as well. Thank you all for attending, and I would like to turn this over to the liaison, to the fire department, which is Councillor Robert Vincent.
Thank you, Chair McLean. It is indeed my honor and privilege to speak on behalf of the town council as we publicly recognize and thank Fire Chief Michael Sullivan for his 40 years of exceptionally meritorious service to our community. Chief Sullivan comes from a long line of Sullivans who have served with distinction in the Wakefield Fire Department for many decades. I note that he took the oath of office as a Wakefield firefighter on August 9th, 1984, 10 years after his father, Lieutenant Robert Sullivan, died in the line of duty on March 11th, 1974. Chief Sullivan was promoted to lieutenant in September 1994, captain in October 1999, provisional chief in August 2008, and chief of the fire department on September 1st, 2009. That means that he has led our fire department for 16 of his 40 years of service, a most impressive accomplishment. The mission of the Wakefield Fire Department is to improve the quality of life within the town by providing a high-quality emergency fire and rescue service, an excellent fire prevention program, including public education and fire investigation, and a firefighting and rescue force capable of handling all types of emergencies. For 40 years, Chief Sullivan has helped ensure that the Wakefield Fire Department has accomplished its mission every day. Chief, the Wakefield Town Council congratulates you and acknowledges that your dedication, trustworthiness, and integrity have reflected great credit upon yourself, the Wakefield Fire Department, and our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other councilors wish to speak?
Counselor Conne.
Chief, I think I'm in a unique situation, the fact that I have a brother who served with you, but I was also, I knew your dad, and I was on the board of selectmen when your dad was a firefighter, and I actually went for that fatal fire that evening and remember it dearly. I was on the board that appointed you. I was on board that, I shouldn't say promoted you to chief, but, you know, agreed the recommendation of town administrator, make you chief. So I have a long history with the Sullivan family, you should be proud, your family should be proud of you, and express appreciation from me, my family, my brother Kevin Conne, a former lieutenant of yours, and we express the county family respect. Thank you.
Chief, congratulations to you on this honor, and thank you to your long line of family service. You make us all proud with your leadership, your dedication, your commitment, your bravery, your service. They all matter, and at a time when longevity or work milestones aren't often recognized anymore, and in a highly mobile society, work society, to have the decades of experience and dedication that you've provided to our community is just invaluable. So thank you. I can say that throughout my time on this council, I've been so impressed by your leadership and your commitment, and you have really overseen an incredible department that we can all be incredibly proud of, and that comes from the leadership down, and you're a big part of that. So thank you for your service over all these years.
Counselor Chine.
You know, I don't think that I have more to add. I do want to say, though, that I think one of the hallmarks of just a tremendous leader is the legacy that you leave behind in terms of the people that work in your department, the legacy that you have for your family. And I, you know, I look at your son, a public school teacher, I look at all the amazing people that you've mentored and trained in the fire department over the years, and, you know, the fact that that legacy goes beyond, you know, just your 40 years of service and goes into the future, I think is a really testament to the type of person you are, the way that you lead with integrity, the way that you lead with compassion, and the way that you lead in a way that you've created a family in the fire department. So thank you for everything you do. It's an incredible, incredible run of service, and we are absolutely lucky to have you here in Wakefield.
And Counselor Butler.
So echoing what everyone said, Chief, it's been, and echoing what Counselor Chine said, you have created a great team within Wakefield, and I'm grateful for your partnership. I think one of the, one of our first votes, our first year, Counselor Dombrowski, was the new fire truck, and that was, we worked really hard on that, and I think over the last, you know, seven, eight years of just the fires we've had in town and being so appreciative of your team and the leadership that you've done, we're really appreciative, and 40 years is amazing, and so thank you for that, and thank you for your family who supported you and allowed you to continue doing this.
Are you offering up another fire truck?
No, I know you'll be, I know they'll be back for another one.
Conversation for another day.
Yes, that's not on today's agenda, Counselor Dombrowski.
Chief, would you like to say anything?
First of all, I want to thank the council for inviting me to come here. You're very correct that I don't like to be the center of attention, but it's extremely humbling, and I'm just grateful for everything that's gone on the last 40 years with the department, and I'm extremely proud to be a member of the department. I think it's a good department. I'm happy that Maureen mentioned a fire truck because we need another fire truck. I would be doing my job if I didn't throw that in somewhere. Just thank you very much for your kind words, I appreciate it more than I can express it, and thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And Chief, you and your family are free to go and relax if you, unless you want to stay for the rest of our riveting.
We'll chop some of the cheese that we have.
You can drop piece of cheese your way out if you wish. Thank you. This is proof that we get to do some pleasant things. We're going to ask public engagement because you're not next to hanging on, because we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion that we go into a public hearing that would be by roll call, Steve, of necessity or not?
I believe yes.
Yes.
I think safer.
All righty. Request a motion that we open a public hearing for the liquor license of Life Love Cheese, LLC, located at 184 Water Street, Unit 101. Do I have a motion?
Sub moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, and I will do roll call this way. Counselor Carney. Counselor Chine.
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Aye.
Counselor Butt.
Yes.
Counselor Vincent.
Yes.
And I am, yes, Sherri, that is 6-0, public meeting is open. I will turn it over to you, Counselor, when you get back to your seat.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. For the record, Attorney Stephen Ciccatelli here before you this evening, representing Life Love Cheese LLC, doing business as Life Love Cheese. With me this evening is Kimmy Sheridan, who is the manager of the LLC, the proposed manager under the liquor license that's being requested this evening, and the majority owner as a member of the LLC. Also with me is Irvine Brockmeyer, who is Kimmy's husband, and the other member of the LLC. We're here before you this evening requesting a package store liquor license for the property at 184 Water Street in Wakefield. You may be familiar with it, it's the brand new building that's been constructed on Water Street, sort of across from Shellmar Glass. There's retail space on the first floor, my client would have a portion of that, of course, with your approval, and the remainder of the building, I believe, will be mixed use residential. The proposed business, and in the packet that I just gave you, there's some information that just shows you my client's background in culinary arts. Basically, what is proposed for this space is an artisan cheese specialty food, gourmet food, specialty sandwiches, charcuterie. She brought you a little sample this evening, there's some menus in the package that I just gave you. The liquor license component is really just sort of ancillary to that, so the intent is not to establish a full-scale liquor store that you might be familiar with, and basically it's simply a complement so someone could come in, order a charcuterie platter, or some other food items, and buy a couple bottles of wine and perhaps take that home. Liquor will not be served on the premises. In the application that's been presented, there is a copy of the DBA certificate that was filed with the town clerk, evidence of funds has been provided, my clients are providing their own funds for the build-out, and it is, you know, fairly substantial investment even though my client is the tenant in the building. She, quite frankly, looked at a lot of cities and towns, and she fell in love with Wakefield, and she felt that this is a business that would very much complement the other wonderful restaurants and establishments in town, and she wanted to take her business, which, as you can see from some of the menus, has been more of a, sort of a wholesale retail basis. This is now a brick-and-mortar store, if you will, and she wanted to make Wakefield her home. Also, because of the fact that this is self-funded, financing will not be involved, therefore my client will not be obviously requesting a pledge of the liquor license. In terms of the packet that I presented this evening, I also wanted you to have evidence of her certificate of completion for TIPS training, her certificate of allergen awareness training, and also serve safe certification. And again, there's a resume that just shows her background in the culinary arts, teaching and writing, and this is just, quite frankly, an extension of that. And there is a sort of a sample menu showing the types of specialty sandwiches, charcuterie, platters, et cetera, cheeses that she would be selling. So, and also, my client is requesting to be the manager under the liquor license, and she would certainly put in the time and oversee, you know, what goes on in this establishment. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council members might have, but my client's very excited, having spent many, many months, if not years, trying to find a location, falling in love with the town of Wakefield in this building, which is quite an improvement over, you know, what had been there before, and again, I think a nice mixed use which complements the neighborhood.
And Sherri, everything approval-wise is in order?
Yeah, it's still working us through the portal, but we are in good shape.
Okay. Counselors, Counselor Carney?
Question, this is a full liquor license, so you'd be able to, you know, sell liquor as well as wine and beer.
So there were certain spirits, for example, in Anset that might be sold, but the intent is not to sell nips, for example, it is not to, the primary business is not the sale of alcohol, so it's not a typical package store where the entire store is designed to sell alcohol, and perhaps chips or something might be just sort of a small business on the side. The main business here is artisanal cheeses, plaid platters, specialty sandwiches and so forth, for catering as well as, you know, for people to purchase and take out. There are a couple of other applications that will be before you once construction is complete in terms of the commendatory, and I believe entertainment for, you know, radio music, but unfortunately, the build-out isn't complete, so that's not being presented this evening.
And the entertainment, I'm sorry.
For music in the space. Just background music.
Just background music.
Yeah. And as far as liquor goes, my intent is all regional, for spirits, all regional spirits from small makers and distilleries, so I want to represent small local businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chine.
Yep. Any other questions, Counselor Dombrowski?
I have been waiting for years for something like this to open up in town, so thank you. I think you're going to be incredibly successful here, I think you're really meeting a need in the community that's going to be huge, and while you're coming to Wakefield in a brick-and-mortar, you're not new to Wakefield, certainly, I know you've had a presence here with many in the community, so thank you for that. Very excited about this. I know a lot of folks will be asking in the paper covered, I think, last week or the week prior, the timeline for opening?
I'm hoping for December, we're still working out the final deadlines with my architect and my construction crew, but what we're hoping, we're working very hand-in-hand with the landlord, and so a lot of the engineering and infrastructure, plumbing, MEPs and things have been put in by him, so we're hoping that that helps speed up the process to get through. My goal is to be open for the holiday season, it's a stretch, and I realize that it could push into the beginning of the year, but I'd love to be open to take advantage of the holidays.
And something else I would just, you know, encourage you to think about too is the Economic Development Council is doing a lot of really innovative things from an economic development standpoint, and one such thing might be, if you find you're running into issues with, you know, your permanent space, is there a way to think about a pop-up or just some other way in which you can make sure you take advantage of the holiday season, you know, so I would just encourage you to reach out to Aaron Kokinda and...
Yeah, and I'm in contact with Aaron a lot, and I also do the Wakefield Farmers Market, and I'll do, I'm currently signed up for both the holiday farmers markets, so I'll still be doing the farmers market next year. I have a pretty loyal customer base there that shows up weekly when I'm there to buy cheese, so I think, hopefully I'll take advantage of that, and I've gotten a few offers of other holiday markets around the community up in Lynnfield and then Andover as well, which is a little further afield, but I think in that same reach of where Wakefield is, so hopefully I'll have those, and then I do want to add, I'm hoping to have the brick-and-mortar so that we can have some nice arrangements and stuff for catering and things like that.
I just think you're going to be a terrific addition to the community, I think you're going to be very well-received. I think it'd be even more well-received if we had any sense of what these items are like. Do we have any idea?
I happen to have brought something for you, and this has all local cheeses on there. My intent is all American artisanal cheeses, so I want to stay with small makers, supporting small farmers, I have relationships with a lot of the farmers that I use, so there will be, you know, I can't get away without a Parmesan, but there will be a few European cheeses, but my goal is to lift up as many American artisanal cheesemakers as possible and have as much of their stuff in our cases, as well as educate the public about what their cheese consumption choices are about. So hopefully, everything in the case, including charcuterie, will be American-made, and then as much as I can on the shelf, small business and American-made, and as much as possible Massachusetts-made.
I guess, great. I don't know, WCAT, if we can get a zoom in of that, of Counselor Vincent, if we can show it to the camera, but it's very cool. Indeed, that's awesome. Best of luck.
Thank you. Counselor Butt?
Can I, I just, I know you're still working with the architect to build the space, but there'll be seating inside?
So we're going to have a little bit of seating available for people who want to stay with their sandwich, and then there are, for the summer, there's a little patio out front that will have some picnic tables out there for people to stay, and we know that there's the park nearby, and I've heard that some people are very excited to have takeaways to take over to the park. The seating will also be, because I like to run workshops as well, so evening workshops after hours for like one-night tasting sort of thing, and so I was already looking at the, what it takes to do one-night type of events.
So if I, so I'm just, I'm just thinking this through, because it is a different model, so if I come in for a sandwich, would I be able to buy, like, drink alcohol there as well? Or you're just selling it? So there's, okay.
Yeah, so just selling the alcohol bottles, it's going to be mostly a biodynamic selection of wines, hopefully representing BIPOC makers around the country and a further afield, and then, again, local distilleries, and then also the craft beers, all New England craft beers there.
I just was trying to figure out if you were going to serve there as well, but it's more part of the basket, so that's great. And then, I'm really excited, I think it sounds great, I'm happy to hear that you're talking to Aaron, let us know how we can help at all, and then for a further conversation, I just want to figure out the mechanical engineering degree, how it led you here, so we'll talk about that some other time.
Some other day. But Aaron has been wonderful, I cannot talk her up enough, she has helped me, like, she's walked me through several spaces and things like that, and she actually hooked me up with this space originally, so she's just been incredible in helping me find a space, patiently looking for places, always texting me saying, oh, we've got a new space for you to check this out, so she's just, she's amazing, she's been very helpful.
Well, that's so nice to hear, and at our meeting last, at the econ meeting last month, we talked about, like, this is exactly what we want to see in town, this is why we invested the ARPA money, was to see people who are at pop-ups or the farmers market then get a brick-and-mortar in our town, and so you're actually the model that we talked about, the council talked about, when we dedicated a million dollars to the Economic Council, so thank you.
When looking at multiple communities, that really puts things over the top for me, because I, you know, I live in Medford, I'd love to open something in Medford, it just hasn't clicked in that same way, where Aaron's like there, and she's like, check this place out, we found this new place, another place had fallen through, and she was immediately like sending me the messages for this place that I'm moving into, so head and shoulders above.
Well, welcome, we're excited.
Good to hear, and thank you for that feedback. Any other councilors? Counselor Chine.
Just very briefly, this is like a dream come true, so very excited to have you here. This will probably affect my cheese consumption very significantly, but it is a great business.
Everybody eats more cheese.
And I'm excited that we'll be able to patronize your business, not just at the farmers market, but more broadly, so with that, Mr. Chair, if I can make a motion to approve the licenses presented?
Excuse me, I think you may want to see if there's any public comment.
Any public comment, it is a public hearing, good point. Town Administrator, any public comment on all of the matters discussed? Not seeing any, all right then, I may then entertain that motion.
All right, so moved again to approve the alcohol license for Life Love Cheese LLC as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dombrowski, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Chine?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And Counselor McLean is yes also, so 6-0. Sherri, thank you very, very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
This is going home with all of us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
I think my wife may be more interested in what's behind Counselor Ciccatelli's letterhead, so I'll put that in the back, but thank you so much, Counselor, for coming in, very good presentation, and we really appreciate it. This is an excellent client, and I think, as everyone said, you're going to be, you're going to be very happy with Wakefield because...
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
We'll be over, get open by the holidays. All right then. I think...
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay. But I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub moved.
And seconded by Counselor Carney. We do this one without a roll call, Steve? All those in favor? Let's just do a show of hands. 6-0, Sherri, I declare the public meeting closed, we're now back in our open session, and the next item on the agenda is public engagement. Just as a brief statement to those who are here from the public, our basic policy is three minutes per person, we ask you to step up to the mic, we ask you to state your name and address, and Town Administrator has a little stopwatch going on that three minutes. We have a maximum of 15 minutes of public participation, we don't engage in the back and forth, but I would suggest to you, specifically because I do know why a lot of you are here tonight, that there will be more on this issue after your public engagement, if you want to stay and listen to the back and forth between the councilors and the Q and A that we'll reach when we go down a couple more agenda items, feel free to stay and observe that, but public participation is a different matter. I did want to make a restatement, though, I think there's been some misconception that we are possibly voting on this tonight. Now, I usually try to set up my agenda so we vote, you know, I give people notice when we vote a couple weeks later, anything that I'm going to have voted expected. That being the case, it is possible that anytime during a meeting, we can't have a motion that's seconded at any time by any counselor to vote on something, so theoretically possible we would be voting on these plans tonight, that wouldn't be my personal intent, but we'll see what happens. And by way of history, this all started in what I call ARPA 1, the first $5 million that this council allocated, going back to November of 2022, and at that time, the Town Administrator issued a letter to us, and relative to the Lake County Pathways, we were told this is a use that topped everybody's list. Unfortunately, it's also a use that's made very difficult by DEP. An individual and several members of FOLQ had presented a concept of walking paths close to the lake on the north of side. Due to the proximity of the lake and related wetlands, it would be near to impossible to get the approvals necessary to build any sort of pathways for much of the area. The sketch attached, however, and we did have a sketch provided by Town Engineer, does provide designated areas where some existing, although mainly unknown trails, could be gravelled like the Floral Way, if you're folks that are familiar with Floral Way. This amenity, coupled with the sidewalk slash bike lane widening north of, already funded through a state grant, will certainly enhance the walking bike and experience on that side of the lake. We will continue to review and work with some private owners to secure other off-north path, but as I stated, the DEP path will be arduous at best. That's what we started with, some, whenever it was, 18 months ago, whatever, November of 2022, figures to be. We have a separate piece that came up in ARPA 2 more recently, relative to putting some potential funding for a path behind the cemetery, but that is not what this was about. So between then and now, this is the first that a lot of us are seeing of the presentations that Mr. Renault has made, so it's kind of new to us, so it's not necessarily something that we've been harping on or grinding out over the course of time. I understand from some of you that you knew before probably some of us did that the surveyors were out in April. We didn't, you know, I didn't necessarily know that, but this has been a process, just to let you know. So we'll take it from there, and I'll open public discussion. Steve, we have...
I think the first one that I have was Chris Hickey.
Chris Hickey?
Nine Linda Road.
Yep. Are you here, Chris? Great, come on up, take the mic, tell us your name and address, and Steve will time, give you the egg timer in three minutes.
I'm going to time it as well, just to make sure I'm holding myself.
I hope you understand, the reason we have to do some limitation is we'd be here for six-hour meetings, which we sometimes are anyway.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. My name is Chris Hickey, I am a resident of Nine Linda Road, we've been there for over 20 years. I'd like to start by saying thank you to all the town councilors. I know what it's like to be in a volunteer leadership position, and I know it's not easy, I know it takes a lot of time and effort, and I sincerely want to thank each and every one of you. I appreciate it, I really do. While we might not always agree on everything, I trust that... While we might not always agree on everything, I trust that each and every one of you have good intentions with regard to protecting and enhancing the beautiful natural landscapes of Wakefield. Having reviewed the plans available online and taken, and talking to people in the know, it is clear that the plan to add some paths between Linda Road and Fielding Street misses the mark of protecting the character of the neighborhood that would be affected by this ARPA plan. For folks not familiar with town council's fiscal year 2024 goals and priorities, protecting neighborhood character is one of the central themes for town council. In fact, at the top of the list of target goals, of which the Lakeside Path Project is goal number four, it says in bold, protects and enhances its beautiful natural landscape, neighborhood character, and signature open space assets, including Lake Quanapawat, Crystal Lake, and Break Heart Reservation. Here are some things we need to consider before recklessly and negatively impacting the character of our neighborhood. The area in question at the end of our street is a refuge for many types of birds, small mammals and reptiles, hawks, herons, eagles, even an occasional American bald eagle have called this place their home over the years. Coyotes are frequently in this area as well, and as a natural predator, they help balance the local ecosystem. A construction project here followed by increased pedestrian foot traffic and bicycle traffic, and of course, trash, no doubt, would be very disruptive to this ecosystem. The town just finished, as we all know, enhancing the sidewalks on North Ave, which enables public access to plentiful established lakeside water views, benches, and parks. Why negatively impact this quiet neighborhood and the wildlife ecosystem with a passion project that supposedly would benefit a small number of passive recreational pedestrians under the guise of enhancing public accessibility to the lake? We have plenty of access to the lake. Last but not least, there are many other projects that could benefit from this funding with simple reallocation. Projects that could benefit many more members of our Wakefield community. We all know that there are many roads that need repair, places where sidewalks need to be built and maintained for safety. What about the solar panels for the school? That's an investment that would result in tangible benefits and ROI, as opposed to this disruptive investment that will continue to cost the town money for years to come with necessary maintenance and management costs. For all these reasons, I urge the town council to vote against this project, force two paths between Linda Road and Fielding Street. Let's use the funding for more measurable benefits as opposed to negatively impacting the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. I believe Steve next up could be Jamie Lupo.
Yes, I believe it is.
Ready? You can state your name and address when you get to the mic there, Mr. Lupo, please.
Certainly. Good evening, council members. I'm Jamie Lupo, homeowner at 21 Fielding Street for the last seven years, and Wakefield resident for over 14 years. I have questions and concerns about the proposed paths that will be discussed shortly, so thank you for this opportunity. Specifically, I'm concerned with connecting two dead-end streets, Fielding and Linda Road, that border protected wetlands. My request is that the council vote no on this project for reasons I will lay out, but in the event that decision isn't reached, we would at least request a more transparent process with ample public discussion. Here are the reasons I respectfully request a no vote on this proposal. The use of ARPA funding has very specific guidelines, and a walking path does not qualify for improving water quality. Rather, it would increase risk of lake water pollution by introducing dog waste and human pollution not currently present at this wetland location. I'd like to ask the council what the plan is for funding the ongoing maintenance of this path and the surrounding area. Removing invasive plants is not easy or quick, and if done incorrectly, only encourages more invasive growth. Has long-term funding to maintain and clean, clear the path been factored in? We are strongly in favor of invasive plant control. We are concerned for more disruption of wildlife habitat. Many animals like ducks, turtles, and foxes nest here, along with blue herons, night herons, hawks, eagles, and bats. We've already seen a reduction in populations since the construction on North Ave started a few years ago. In addition, public security is extremely concerning. We're concerned that an unlit path running behind two single-family homes at the end of two dead-end roads will invite the wrong type of people and activity. It's worth noting that Fielding Street is not regularly patrolled by Wakefield Police. Assuming this continues, I would like to hear the thoughts of the Wakefield Police on this proposed path and any impact on public safety. As Dirk butters to this project, the path ends in our backyard, and I'm grateful that some of you did visit today. I heard you met some of the ducklings potentially, so thank you for that. And this is quite frankly visible from our bedroom and some other very sensitive areas. And so we would like to see official plans, including property lines and path dimensions. In conclusion, we ask that you vote no on this project as this would not be financially responsible, nor in the best interest of Lake Quanapawat and surrounding area. I would suggest the money be redirected to more financially rewarding projects that are suited for ARPA funds, like renewable energy investment. There are also ample other stormwater projects these funds can be directed towards as well that the Clean Water Committee has previously identified. Note that Fielding Street was not a flagged site by them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I believe, Steve, our third public participant would be Bronwyn Delavope?
Yes, and I think I don't have anybody else in studio. So I think everything else will be online at this point.
Okay. Sherry, could you possibly bring over Ms. Delavope?
Yes, she's coming right now.
Thank you.
Can we get to try the cheese later?
Put it out, yeah.
I say help yourself, yeah. Pass it around.
Okay, I guess she's not coming over, so I'm not quite sure. She doesn't want, doesn't want to speak or what's happening?
Okay, you, you thought she was going to be speaking, Steve?
Yeah, she did, yeah. She did ask to, yes.
I'd just like to point out, WCAT is playing server this evening, too.
She's coming over here.
Okay, we can wait a minute.
Nope, she's here. Hi, Bronwyn, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Good evening. The Bronwyn Delavope, 8 Cyrus Street. My participation tonight concerns, also concerns proposed lakeside pathway that you will be discussing later this evening. There's plenty of good things that this council has done for the town of Wakefield, but this lake path is unfortunately not one of them. I'm opposed to the plan as it stands now for the following reasons. Number one, this area is our lake's last remaining forested wetland. It should be protected as is. Instead of town leadership insisting on destroying and digging up and improving our few natural areas, they should be treasured as is and protected, and not taken over for a totally unnecessary and in this case, an environmentally unfavorable endeavor. This plan seems to be trying to fix an area that isn't broken and is also, has been in works for about 18 months, I think you said. And this comes under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Yet the Conservation Commission has not been approached, consulted, or involved until very recently. So instead, money has already been spent on the plan without the benefit of the expertise of the Conservation Commission, and I would like you to address why. Number three, the route of the pathway, as has been discussed by previous speakers, is devoid of consideration or respect for the residents who live on Linda Road and Fielding Street, and the character of their neighborhood, as well as the yacht club, who, to my knowledge, like Conservation Commission, were not consulted while this plan was being devised. These omissions, lack of inclusion, throw the whole process of this, this pathway into doubt, and, and really leads to, as someone else mentioned, the appearance of a, of a lack of transparency. I am concerned that those who live in the area will have their daily quality of life utterly disrupted and turned upside down because hundreds and maybe even thousands of people will be rooted up and down these small residential neighborhood streets as they walk their dog and jog the lake. And the dark areas of this pathway at night will surely attract some unsavory behavior, bringing the need for more police presence and costing the town more resources than is necessary. And number four, this pathway is unnecessary. It seems more like a way to sort of hurry up and spend the ARPA money before the money expires. Spending the remaining money on a project which would actually benefit the community and residents who live here seems like a much better idea. And because of the ecological impacts of this project, it, it is hard to believe that, I even have to explain to adults at this stage, that we should be protecting our last remaining national natural resources. But it's clear with this project as others that this lesson has not been learned. And I do recommend that the council please vote no on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Delavope. I believe that concludes the public participation, at least that we're aware of. Correct, town administrator?
That we're aware of, yes.
That we're aware of. Anybody else online that you have, Sherry?
No, there's nobody else.
Okay. I would like to say too that I did receive, and I believe, Sherry, you received a copy of a letter from the Board of Friends of Lake Quanapawat. I don't have it in front of me. It was pretty much that they need time to assess this themselves. They weren't, they weren't ready to opine because of the, the short timeframe that they just became aware of it as well. I could read it, because Counselor Dombrowski has it. To the Wakefield Town Council, McLean Chair, presentation on trails, item eight, August 12, 2024, dated August 9, 2024. The Friends of Lake Quanapawat Board is pleased to see a presentation regarding lakeside trails on the upcoming town council meeting agenda. We recognize this as an important beginning and advise the council to initiate an open and effective evaluation of the proposed plans that allows for sufficient public discussion and input. We look forward to participating in a positive process. Please distribute this letter in advance of the meeting to the town council. I apologize if that wasn't done. Did we send this around, Sherry?
She did.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Now, I don't apologize then. And acknowledge it in the meeting. I'm acknowledging it in the meeting right now. Thank you and the council for all your efforts. Signed by the current president, I believe is Bill Conley, but let me scroll down. Respectfully submitted on behalf of the Board of Lake Quanapawat, Bill Conley, President, copy to Sherry A. Dalton. Simply put, I think that's what we're trying to do now, is initiate that process. So I, I hope we don't move too quickly, me personally, because I think there is a lot more input to be had. So I did want to acknowledge that letter, which acknowledges that they would like to see more of a public process. And that being said, I think we have probably finished with public participation. And the next item on the agenda is item seven, appointments.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I might say if you want to flip seven and eight, that might make some sense, but we have people here.
We could. Why don't we? What a wise suggestion. Item eight is presentations and updates in the American Rescue Plan Act. The first will be the presentation on trails. Before we start, I want to make another historical statement. No, feel free to, sit down, Bill, sit down. As I said, we had a couple of different presentations relative to the lake. One was, as you're also familiar with, this $100,000 for looking at, you know, paths in general. And we also had $150,000 at what I call ARPA 2 more recently, where we were allocating the other $2 million, including the $1 million that my two counselors to my right have indicated, you know, went, went $1 million to downtown activities. And at that time, one of the votes, and I'm doing this also for Counselor Carney because he wasn't here last year, he just got elected. One of the votes that I had proposed was doing half of the roof of this galvan and solar for $500,000 with ARPA money. That, we like to say around here, you have to count to four out of seven. We didn't get four votes on that, so that did not go through. What I did say at our last meeting here was that, and the only vote expected that I put on my agenda for tonight, our, our town's council agenda, was that for the ARPA 2 money, which isn't what you folks are primarily concerned with, that $150,000 for paths by the cemetery, negotiating behind the cemetery, that if that money wasn't going to be used in that fashion, that we reallocate that money or a portion, a good portion of that money to the galvan solar project, which we intend to put on as a town warrant this year for the full roof. So instead of 500, you were talking twice that or a little more than twice that. And it will, it will be a real process that we're already going through as well. So what I had on here was reallocation of those funds, but now we have more than that because we have this presentation, just to give a historical perspective. I'm going to now turn it over to our town engineer, Mr. Renault.
Folks, so I don't know how much background you really want me to get into, Mr. Chair, because you kind of already provided the summary. That was probably my first sheet of comments. So do you want me maybe to jump right into the proposals? Or do you want me to kind of give a little bit of the history from, from at least the DPW's perspective and kind of where we are? Or I'm happy to do it either way.
Well, I'm not going to shut down Q and A from the town counselors in any way, shape, or form. So if you want, you could go through the presentation and then we could, you know, we could have, have at it.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. So, yeah, so back in November 22, I was asked to develop a, kind of a sketch showing options for, for lake paths based on John Sophia's original plan. It was more of like a 35-page presentation piece that was either handed out to the council or somehow made it to me, to my desk at some point.
Right. And to be clear, we had a sketch then, which is significantly different from the one we're looking at tonight.
Yep. So there were two sketches that were provided. I don't know why one ended up in your packet and the other one did not. But ultimately, it showed, ultimately-
John said, "ba."
Yes, it is what it is, right? So, so looking at where we are, kind of the intent here is to identify the issues with the wetlands, and that really the majority of the path that was being proposed just really isn't constructable due to wetland impacts. So that's really what-
Would that be, I don't want to interrupt you, but I would like to follow the trail. Ah, no pun intended. Would that be because if you started over by Willard, at 19 Willard, the wetlands come right up on the lawn, so you wouldn't access in any way through that path?
Well, his plan was starting to go from Beacon all the way to Quanapawat Parkway. That's what the proposal initially was. And it had a series of trail systems within larger wetland areas by Shore Drive, through all of that, as like boardwalks to be constructed, and then coming into that wooded area and having a series of trails through there. So that's really what the proposal initially was. So as I looked at it, we received the original $100,000 being allocated for us to look at it. I carved off $11,000 of that to do survey and wetland investigation for the section between Linda and, and, nope, not, not Fielding, to, to Willard. So Linda to Willard.
And we've, I have seen that, upon request, have seen that, that survey map. But we don't have, do we have that as part of the presentation?
In blips, we do. All right. So as, so as I jump in, so this map that you can see with the, with the, with the purple showing the wetlands in different highlights, basically was identified where our wetland flagging is, also identified where, you know, kind of gave us topography as well to determine what, what could physically be constructed in this area, because this was the only area that actually would be potentially feasible. So I'm looking at this more as like, this is what's feasible to construct if you folks think this is what, what you want to do with the funds. So, so the first section that I identified was at the end of Linda Road, so taking it from where the sidewalk ends, going to an existing trail system that goes through the wooded area. So the red piece is, is an existing trail that already is there. What we would do is improve that, so about 250 feet of stone dust to improve the walking area through there.
Why stone dust as opposed to bark mulch, et cetera? I mean, I-
Durability typically. Also bark mulch wouldn't be ADA compliant. Stone dust is considered ADA compliant, as long as it's maintained. So-
Do we use stone dust in Floral Way, or is that a different mixture?
Floral Way we did just for the section in front of the cemetery. That was a request from the Historic Commission, so we accommodated it in there. Initially, I was going to pave the whole thing because obviously that's, it's more durable and, and holds up. We don't see the erosion, all of that type.
Right. I already see erosion on Floral Way, so we can anticipate maintenance, I would assume.
Yep, exactly. Yep. You would see that and you would expect maintenance. Before, what we were having is a big swaths of that wash out and end up actually in the lake, causing invasive species. We were able to control that, re-pitch it so it goes towards the inside. We have the washout actually not going into the lake anymore, so that solves part of the erosion and, and some of the, the water quality problems that we were having out there. Ultimately, my initial proposal was to pave the whole thing. I got a lot of pushback on that from historical folks and a few other residents as well.
In the far left picture here, you talk about opening up the view. You'd have to start, I mean, that's right by the water line.
It is, yeah. So not, not-
You'd have to pare back and clear it?
No, it's more like a vista pruning type thing. No, it's more like a vista pruning type thing. So, you know, if you go there at different times of year, you can see out into the lake. So it would be more of like a pruning scenario rather than vegetation removal, full removal. That's not what we were intending to do. There's a little bit of a walkway path as you get down there that you can see through. We would just kind of open that up a little bit so folks, if they wanted to come to that area to see the lake, they could. We'd add a sidewalk so that you'd be able to get to the entrance of the trail, so you're not walking inland of road. We would be very close.
And that sidewalk is along where sometimes they do park cars at the QIC.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. But this would allow folks to get to it. So, you know, there's a trade-off with all of these, and I understand that.
Right.
Again, looking at what is feasible.
Now, it's funny because I was down there the other night and they had the Chamber of Commerce there and they were parking, backing those cars right into the sidewalk.
And they'd probably park on the sidewalk is what would happen.
Would that be asphalt?
Ah, yes, that would be asphalt.
You know what a fan I am.
Yep, yep, yep. So we do asphalt in that area. So this kind of shows the clearing and what it looks like inside. We wouldn't be removing trees here. We would just be, you know, kind of re-establishing the existing trail that's there.
We'd probably be removing trees when you, when you get through that, that almost unsurpassable path entrance there. There's trees and such in there, right?
But again, it's pruning back stuff. So we'd be pointing branches so you can get through.
Well, some of them are right, some of them are right on the path. Or what would be the path? I don't really know that there is a path just yet.
There is a path there, yep. So it would be opening it up and kind of making, you know, there is a path that meanders through. We were following essentially the same.
Very meandering, yeah.
Yeah, and we would follow that same, the same meander.
Okay.
All right. So that's this piece first, so also including the two hundred foot sidewalk extension.
Is it culvert or wetland?
Is a culvert a wetland?
Or likely to have more water? Because there's a culvert inside there too as well.
Yep, there is, yep.
I mean, would that involve a problem with having a path?
No, we would just go right over it. I mean, that's just like it is today. So, yeah, we would do, all we would do would really be.
Well, you wouldn't want to go over it like it is today because you might twist an ankle.
Well, that's the idea of improving it, right? So that you're not, so that folks aren't twisting their ankles.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the thought process.
And this would be heavy equipment?
We would do it with smaller, it wouldn't be heavy equipment, it'd be more smaller equipment.
How small, bobcats?
Bobcats, skid steers, that type of thing, yep. So that's the work for Linda. Linda to Fielding is the portion, so when we evaluated this, this map shows that wetland that bumps out. So if you see towards the left-hand side of the screen, the purple, as that comes down, that's the buffer zone, and then the hatched area that looks like little dots, those are the wetland areas within this undeveloped right-of-way. This was something that was included within that initial proposal from Sophia, where he wanted to kind of use these existing, you know, undeveloped paper streets is what he was looking to have us do. So this would be really all we could do, so the utility really from going to Linda to Willard doesn't, we can't make it work. We would have to bridge that entire wetland, so we're not allowed to fill what's called an outstanding resource water. So if you recall, maybe four years ago or so, the Water Protection District for, for the Lynn Water Sewer water supply extended up the Saugus River and included Lake Quinapowit. So that's now part of the Zone A of Lynn's water supply. That means that any wetland that's adjacent to it now becomes an outstanding resource water and you can't fill it. Typical wetlands we're allowed to fill up to five thousand square feet per state statute as long as we're replicating. Obviously, that still requires approval from the Conservation Commission, not something they're necessarily fans of, so, you know, we wouldn't really be anticipating to try to do it for this type of project anyway. But ultimately, it's not something we could even, we could even look to do. So after we received the money allocation back in November of '22, we started looking at the project and trying to figure out how we could make things work in the fall of '23, where we heard from the DEP, I reached out to them to confirm that my understanding is correct and that these outstanding resource waters can't be touched. We couldn't do a boardwalk, we couldn't do any of these things. So that's kind of how we got down to these, these projects. So then, trying to figure out from that eleven thousand dollars to figure out where wetlands are, how we could get through here. So that's really what we've, what we've spent to date just to determine feasibility. So we can only do about two hundred and thirty-five feet of stone dust path that would tie into the end of Fielding. I'd probably do some stormwater enhancements there because right now Fielding Street just drains down and kind of directly discharges into the, into the, into the wetland that's there now. So we tried to do some stormwater enhancements right there.
Right, we also have, you also have at the end of Fielding a new bioretention area. I don't remember that as being part of the paths, you know, per se. I mean, now we're getting into swales and bioretention areas.
Yep, for sure, yep. But I mean, with any projects that we do, we always look for enhancements, especially around the lake, anything we can do for stormwater treatment and stormwater enhancement.
And the picture on the right, those, all the bushes to the right, is this from the fence between the two properties?
Yeah, so this is looking essentially where.
Because you would basically have to take out all of that greenery there, correct? For that's where the path would be.
Without a doubt, yeah.
The path would be, right.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're looking at this because the money was allocated, so that's why we're here and looking at it, so.
Right, I know. Yeah, we haven't spent it yet.
That's right.
Not all of it, yeah.
Yeah, we've only spent ten thousand, eleven thousand.
And if you take out all those bushes, you still don't necessarily see the lake though, per se.
You're not going to see the lake. No, no. I mean, you have a ways of wetlands and trees and everything up there. So you're really going to be next to a wetland. That's what you're going to be doing.
And what it doesn't show either, and I'm not trying to be partisan here, is that, I mean, it doesn't show the, this picture doesn't show the proximity to the houses, really. Because having been out there, having stood there, the houses are pretty close.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, but we would be on the other side of the fence, so the fences are essentially on their property lines, so those have been installed properly, you know. This would, this would be, you know, within this undeveloped right-of-way that exists. So that was the, so that's for the initial hundred thousand before I jump into the part two. Do you want me to maybe go to questions here?
Well, I'm going to have all the councils ask their questions, but I have a couple of preliminary questions, you know. I mean, no offense to the estimates, they equal a hundred exactly sixty-five and thirty-five and, you know, but there's not a lot of backup, backup to them. Will we be, I assume we'll be hiring contractors, as we often do, to do this work? And, you know, the pricing, it seems to me, you know, could have been a little bit more developed.
Well, I mean, I round up to numbers, but I mean, we have an estimate that was completed. I mean, I typically have estimates when I'm coming here for all the pricing I provide you. I'm not necessarily always giving you backup on all of, you know, our bid results and numbers. These are based on bid prices and things that we've received.
And whatever those estimates have, though, doesn't, as has been stated, talk about the future maintenance, the future maintenance costs.
Without a doubt, does not.
You know, I'm wondering, we haven't really been back there maintaining any of these properties for many, many years, from what I'm told and from what I perceive going back there myself. And I wonder whether we will be, you know, I know some folks will say, well, you know, Audubon often, well, we're not mass Audubon. Audubon often sponsors pass, but Audubon has a staff and Audubon has the resources. I am concerned that, you know, the costs we're seeing just from the ARPA funds are not the final cost, as was stated previously by a couple of other folks.
I wouldn't disagree with that at all.
Yeah, okay. Councilor Dombrowski?
Thank you for this, Mr. Renault, so far. I know you're kind of, we're at a breaking point.
Yes, then we can go to the second half.
So a few things. First off, I wanted to mention that as DPW liaison, you know, I've kind of explored, I've explored this with you and the department. One thing I want to be clear on is, this is not a proposal that DPW came up with, correct?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, this was not one of our initial projects. So we gave you a list of them. I think you funded, if not all, I think we were missing, we had water mains on there that you folks didn't fund, but we ended up funding that through different means, so that's still moving forward, so that's good. You know, obviously added additional money for sidewalks. You had asked us to look at sidewalk extensions, that's been great, so that's, we appreciate all the funds for those too. Obviously, the bathroom piece is kind of similar to that, where, you know, this was an idea that became a public works project. I come before you with how I think we should do it. That's kind of where we are today. If we want to think about how we did that, you know, with the bathroom project, we're kind of right at that same spot right now, where, you know, I don't go to the Conservation Commission, I don't go to everybody when I'm coming up with the concepts and coming before you folks to see what you want to do. I would move forward with that after I get buy-in from where we're going. I would need to have that, you know, the, the wetland lines delineate, all those things would have to be done, but, you know, ultimately, it's just kind of, I look at it the same way we did the Vets project, where we came in with an initial outline. I was asked to kind of take some feedback on what to revise, what to move forward, and then we had a much larger town meeting at the Galvin. It's kind of the same idea, I would think.
But I think just to be clear, I mean, DPW spends a lot of time assessing needs of the town.
Yes.
And identifying projects.
We do.
And then from there, you know, hopefully we can get funded and we can have them go forward. This has nothing to do with anything, this is not a DPW priority. This has nothing to do with DPW.
No, no, we did not identify as a project.
And in fact, the Clean Lake Committee, to my recall, like about, probably now, maybe four years ago now, close to, had gone through and identified some projects and opportunities, right? And this was not part of that either.
We did not, because, you know, there, even though it does flow into a wetland that's not into the lake, so that provides some natural cleansing too. But I mean, it does make sense to add something there if we really wanted to, it does, but it wasn't identified as a priority because again, it's a public, I mean, a private street, so we'd be kind of doing all that stuff too. We did identify it at Beacon, so that'll be part of the second discussion. We can definitely get into that a little bit because that was a project that was definitely highlighted as a priority for sure, so.
Very different, but I think, you know, I mean, I run the lake a lot and I often will go down Fielding and turn around, often without Linda. The only priority I think DPW should have for those two streets is repaving. The amount of times I've almost twisted an ankle, for real, it's bad, especially at night as it gets darker. But these are very quiet residential streets.
Without a doubt, yes.
There's no question, and I think the residents that live there bought or remain there for a particular reason, and that's because of the character of this. And we talk so much about neighborhood character, trying to preserve it, and it's not just, you know, historical buildings, but it's also just someone's peace and tranquility and being able to enjoy. This really presents to me as a problem, I mean, as a, I guess more than anything, a solution searching for a problem. Like, this ultimately just connects two dead-end streets at its core. I don't know what the purpose of that is, you know? I mean, there, it's dead-end for a reason, just like a cul-de-sac is a cul-de-sac for a reason, right? And it just feels like we're, you know, trying to create all this potential issue when DPW hasn't identified it as a need or priority. Neighbors clearly are not psyched about it, and I don't even know that this council necessarily has much of a buy-in. So I'm really wondering how much more we even have to be talking about this. I think it was a worthwhile exercise to spend the eleven thousand to understand what the options are. I respect what Friends of Lake Quinapowit have to say relative to having a dialogue about lake paths. This is not the place, this is not the place for that in any way. And I just wonder how much more we should be talking about this, and maybe we just need to turn the page and move on to, you know, more worthy projects.
I mean, that's a, I think that's a dialogue for you folks. I mean, we get the direction on it, so however you want, if you.
I just want to be clear, like, I don't want to shoot the messenger here because you are literally just delivering, you're acting upon the direction, the directive you received from at least one member of this council. This is not your initiative.
In the vote, in the vote to allocate.
And the vote to allocate the dollars, of course, yeah.
Those two.
But that's, but that's what you're doing. So you're not coming here trying to sell us on this project. You're coming here saying, you charged us with doing something, we've done the preliminary work, here's the information.
You got it.
Turns out, I think the information's kind of not so great, you know, and so I think we can probably say, okay, this should probably be just put on, put on the shelf, you know, in perpetuity at this point.
So we're doing that part you're talking about. We're talking to each other. I'm going to start with Councilor Jones.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bill. I, you know, have spent a lot of time with you on this. We've done some, spent some time walking in the area. You know, I do respectfully disagree with Councilor Dombrowski that, you know, we can kind of put this on the shelf. And I say that because, you know, we as a council voted, I believe, either seven zero or six one for both of these tranches of ARPA funds. So this was something that we wanted to look at, and it was something that we thought was, was valid. I think the history was helpful and I think.
One correction there on the second tranche, I think I was voting no on a lot of it.
I think you were the six to one on the second tranche, yes. That's what I said, seven oh, six one.
Thank you for identifying that, yep.
You know, I think it was helpful to sort of talk through the history of John Sophia's plan, right? Because I think for a lot of us, like the vision and the, you know, kind of the possibility of almost having like a boardwalk that kind of encircled that shore of the lake would have been something that I think would have been really exciting. Of course, we don't have the ability to do that. So I think we're left here with a couple of smaller initiatives that each have their own sort of challenges and opportunities, and I want to take them separately. So if you wouldn't mind going back to the previous slide for the wooded area. So this one, I think, is worth exploring, and when I say exploring, I think the next step would be, you know, potentially a Conservation Commission filing so that, you know, we can look at the environmental areas of that, you know, and have some more public input and discussion. The fact that we already have a path there and that essentially what we would be doing is effectively cleaning up that path and making it more usable, I think that that's something that has some value. It is a lovely area there. It's a great place to sit and reflect, and given that we wouldn't be kind of creating something new in whole cloth but doing effectively maintenance there, I think it's worth kind of bringing that to the next step. I also do think the sidewalk on Linda Road is something that's important. So like Mr. McLean, you know, I've been to events at the Yacht Club where people are parked up and down that street. Particularly once the sun goes down, it is really tricky to walk into that area. The sightlines are bad, there's a lot of vegetation. You know, given that that is a destination that people do go to at night for events, I think that having a sidewalk on that side of the street extending what gets sort of stopped, you know, roughly two-thirds of the way down, down Linda, is something that again, you know, warrants some discussion. I'm not saying that we should vote to approve it today, but I do think that it makes sense to, to at least take the next step, have the Conservation Commission look at it, and then come back to us ultimately for a final decision based on the feedback that we see. If you flip to the next slide, so that's the Linda Wood Road wooded area. The Fielding Street to Linda Road connection, you know, this is again, unfortunately, the one piece of that sort of vision of a full lakeside path that survives based on the delineation of the wetlands. You know, I do think that there's some value in again, having Conservation Commission look at it, not that we'd make a final decision today, but just so we have a little bit more information. I also do think that there's value in looking at that bioretention area at the end of Fielding. This may not have been something that was, that was prioritized by the Clean Lake Committee four years ago. However, the Clean Lake Committee four years ago didn't have the benefit of knowing that we had ARPA funds at our disposal. And so the fact that we do and the fact that that does give us potentially an opportunity to look at inflow in an area that maybe we weren't able to consider beforehand, I think also has some merit. So, you know, from my perspective, I think this should be the beginning of a process or a continuation of a process that involves looping in the Conservation Commission, and I hope that's something that we as a council will do.
Councilor Carnegie, you had your hand up.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this whole project here, even if it was, if we could have done the whole boardwalk. As a young kid, I walked that whole lake and I know that area. And I've walked around the cemetery, I walked through with boots on, walking through the waters there. You know, these people moved into a beautiful little neighborhood. It's a unique neighborhood, okay? It's not like my neighborhood. It's a unique neighborhood, okay? And we're invading their property. We're saying what's better for them. I think that's absolutely wrong. I think you went down the wrong path here. I didn't argue with many, many of the other things that you guys came up with. And this was unique. We didn't go to town meeting under these articles. This council, you know, prior to my get elected, were given the authority to pick all these projects. And as Counselor Gausi brought up, this wasn't a DPW project. This was ideas that came up, you know, in brainstorming. Hey, let's put a boardwalk around the lake. I've walked that lake. There's nothing wrong with that, walking around that lake. It's natural. That's what it is. So to invite people, we haven't talked about putting signage up. So if you're gonna put this walkway in there, let's put signs up on not there. I'm saying, hey, come on down here. What are you advertising here? I think it's absolutely wrong. I think you're invading these people. You're putting these people in a situation where they have to defend their homeland. They have to defend their homes and their streets. I think it's absolutely wrong. I would vote against it tonight, but the chair's intention was not to vote tonight. That's fine with me. But I think this is absolutely wrong. It's the worst project I've seen. And I think there's a lot better things that we can spend this money on. Thank you.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair McLean. Thank you, Bill and Steve, for meeting with me today. Thank you, residents, especially the one that gave me a glass of water Saturday, not the one that got me poison ivy. I do want to mention before I get into particulars that Fielding Street is a private road.
It is.
That's why it's not repaved, by the way.
Yes.
You have to do a betterment petition and acceptance. I know, because I live on private road myself, or I did. So how do you get down Fielding Street to do the work? And especially, how do you do the bio-retention area if it's a private road and the residents don't allow you down there?
We'd be working through the undeveloped right-of-way. We own property on the other side, so we have interest in the road, in the private.
So all of your equipment would have to go down Linda if the residents on Fielding didn't allow you to go down there, right? Okay. So I'm very particular about what I vote for.
Yeah.
And as you know, I did a lot of research on this. And back in November 14th of 2022, we approved $100,000 for what was called Lakeside Paths.
Yep.
It has been referred to as Lakeside Paths in every presentation that the town administrator has given us since then concerning ARPA funds. The supporting documentation before we took that vote on November 14, 2022, was a memo that the town administrator put together on November 7th, 2022. Now, the chair has already read the section of that that dealt with Lake U pathways, that doesn't deal with Linda Road at all. But the other relevant thing that I shared with you all today is there was an attachment to that documentation. And the attachment does have a map showing Linda Road. What was extremely important to me in terms of what I voted on is the trail that is denoted on this map is from Linda Road south on North Avenue, down towards shore and south of shore, down towards the cemeteries. There's no depiction on this map showing anything relating to Linda Road and Fielding Street. So my opinion is what I voted on in November of 2022 is different when you thought your marching orders were to go and put together a proposal for Linda and Fielding. Because I looked at the supporting documentation and I don't see that the vote that I cast then dealt with Fielding and Linda at all. Now, if anyone on the council has supporting documentation that counters that, I've looked at all the meeting minutes where we've discussed ARPA since then. I can't find one reference where we've talked about Linda and Fielding until this presentation that came up now. So I'm a little bit befuddled that I've gotten a presentation like this on this particular project. I know you're not the originator of it. You're doing what you were asked to do. Because I just don't see from the supporting written documentation, which I rely on, that that was a vote I cast back in November of 2022.
So that plan, the one you have in there, is a section that really is just unbuildable. That would be where the boardwalk went out to go. And then there was a second plan.
That was not in our package.
Yeah, and I don't know why and what the situation was there, but ultimately it wasn't. And that showed the Linda section. And I don't know if I showed you that today or not, but we definitely had a second section that showed that.
But you know, Bill, there was also very broad language that we used back in '22. And as a result of that, I had asked the town administrator to look into discussing with QIC or look into discussing with Lakeside Office Park whether we might be able to do an easement. You know, none of that ever happened. So to me, or to my knowledge, it didn't happen. So I'm not being critical. I'm simply saying that this has gone along for many, many months. And then all of a sudden, we learn after the fact that surveyors are out in April. And, you know, I'm not, I'm trying not to be critical, but I really feel like I was, many of us were out of the loop in this most recent development of Linda.
Yeah, I'm definitely picking up on that. I've heard it from a few of you, so...
If I could just finish a couple more of my thoughts.
Sure.
If assuming for the sake of argument that I did cast a vote in November 14, 2022, that would include Linda and Fielding, my question was the same one I posed to you earlier today. Why wasn't there any action taken as far as consultation with the Friends of Lake U, the Yacht Club, the Conservation Commission, and especially the residents, like giving the residents written notice? This is going to potentially be happening in your neighborhood. You informed me today that the survey, you got the contract for the survey in May of 2024, April of 2024. The survey was conducted in May of 2024, a significant period of time since a vote was cast in November of 2022. Which frankly reinforces my feeling based on that information coupled with this documentation that is not something, this is not something that I voted for in any way, shape, or form back in November of 2022. If the map had been different and it did include Linda and Fielding, I probably would have asked a lot more questions about that back then. But I erroneously, I guess, relying on this document, that was the supporting documentation, assumed that Linda and Fielding were not part of this at all because they're not depicted on this map, which was the only document, the only map given to me. Whether we didn't get maps that we should have gotten is not the town council's responsibility. Our responsibility is look at what's presented to us and then make an informed decision. And I'm not faulting you at all on this either. I always told you, I praised your work. I think you're extremely smart. Not as smart as the cheese person who has a master's degree from MIT.
That's how you do it, right? That is how you do it.
She was the smartest person in the room when she was in here with an MIT degree. So I don't know where I am. I don't think this should go forward as well because we have a legal obligation, the ARPA funds have to be obligated by December 31st, 2024. I think there's other uses for this money. When you get to the next one, I'm actually an advocate for the Lakeside and Beacon. But from a factual standpoint, I'm very confused and frustrated by this part of the process.
Counselor Dombrowski.
So I'd actually like to move this forward by making a motion that we have DPW discontinue any work exploring this Linda Road, Fielding Street, you know, pathway initiative.
Second.
Are we talking just this one or both?
No, what you've presented thus far, so...
Yeah, we're going one piece at a time.
Just making sure.
I'll say, so both of the pathways, sections of pathway that you've presented here tonight, yes. Because DPW has a heck of a lot of work to do, a lot of practice going on. And I'd like to be able to see your talents and your team's talent focused on the things that are necessary to get done here and are actual improvements. And so I think this is just becoming a sidetrack and it's taking up our resources at this point. We've gone through, we've explored it, we're beyond. So anyway, that was, my motion was to...
We have a motion and second discussions. Counselor Chines.
Would, through you, Mr. Chair, Counselor Dombrowski, would you consider splitting the motion to take each of the sections separately?
I don't think we need to. I think it's the same issue with both of them.
So I'll vote no on the motion then, just to let you know.
I, you know...
I'm sorry, can I just, a clarification, taking which separately?
So my question is, could we take a separate motion on the Linda Road wooded area and sidewalk as one piece of it? And then the Linda Road to Fielding Street path as a separate piece?
Just wanted to be clear, you weren't talking about the two parts.
No, I, you know, I just, I appreciate sort of the feedback on the Linda Road to Fielding Street piece of it. I do think, again, as I said in my comments, I think that there is a great deal of merit to the Linda Road wooded area and the sidewalk there. And I would hate to throw that out with the rest of it. And so, you know, to the extent that there is willingness on the part of the maker of the motion to take those two separately, that would certainly affect the way that I would vote on it.
Okay. Point made. Apparently didn't register. Any other discussion by counselors?
So just a discussion point. I don't want to lose what Counselor Chines said. I, that I think there's an opportunity, and Counselor Vincent kind of talked about the timeline, is I'd love to see DPW work with Conservation Commission as these projects come up and kind of get their way in. I'm not so concerned about other groups, but when we have other town groups that are supposed to be looking at this, I would have loved for them to have weighed in. But I agree that we do have other projects to weigh in. And so I just ask that through Town Administrator Steve. I think, you know, we have a conservation agent, we have a whole committee. I would love for there to be way in, so this isn't a DPW decision only. Because I think there are other groups in town that could weigh in, especially with wetlands and things like that.
Yeah, but the first step will be to get a survey done. So you can delineate where the wetlands are, which is what we did there, so that's...
Yeah, it's just kind of the process. So I would do the wetlands, delineate that, then I go to them as a filing. So as long as, you know, everyone's on board with the concept here, then I go to Conservation Commission and see if they agree with it or not. That's, the process is kind of built in already.
So they're not involved in the surveying?
No, no, no. We, I typically come with something proposed, they react to it, provide me feedback. I modify and get to usually consensus most of the time. I say, I think every time since I've been here, at least.
Okay.
Yeah, that's typically how we do it.
Thank you for explaining that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed? Chair, that's 5-1. Counselor Chines opposed. Motion carries. You want to move on to your second part of the project there?
Sure, sure. So kind of the second rung of, or second round of Lake Path funding was to look from Beacon Street to get to Linda Road. That, again, was the area that needs all the boardwalks. It's really not constructible. We looked at potentially going through the cemetery. Steve has contacted those folks. They said really not interested in that as an option. Recognizing kind of where we were and looking around Beacon Street, there is a potential need in this area. So I wanted to at least highlight it to the council, so you guys can decide if that's something you think makes sense or not. Existing path that's there, you know, we had a lot of erosion. We have tripping hazards all over it.
What do you do with that rock, Bill?
Which, which one?
The big one in the middle.
Hammer it? We hammer it. Yeah, they bring a big hammer out there and...
So does that save us money on the stone dust?
Uh, no, no, because that will chip away, so we'll still have some big fragments. But ultimately, though, you know, the thought was we could kind of go, same idea, stone dust. You know, make this a little bit more formal. We can get rid of a lot of that erosion with some swales. The big thing is the end of Beacon Street, we have a lot of erosion there. So if you down there, you see the kind of the little peninsula that's been created, that's all erosion. And as DPW over the, you know...
Why are there big, I mean, are they all erosion tracks? I see one that looks like a tire track. Is somebody backing a boat into there?
I couldn't tell you, but to me, it looks like all erosion. So, yeah, because you've got to keep in mind, you have that whole run of pavement that goes. It stops and then you can see them, the rivulets starting, and they just gouge out. I mean, water does a lot of amazing things. So, you know, this is something that the Clean Lake Committee highlighted early on. We saw this and thought it made a lot of sense to try to, you know, direct water to something, whether it's a bio-swale or whether we go with more, just even a general swale, just to get the water through. Something to that effect to stop the erosion. Because, again, erosion helps with the algal blooms, also transports seeds and invasive stuff. So you see them typically where we have erosion and where the deposition ends up from that erosion, we see a lot of invasive species. So we had that at Floral Way that we corrected. Right now, another location that we could talk about would be at the Lower Common, where we have the stone dust path coming down from Main Street. The bottom of that, where it all erodes, is where all the fragmities sit. So it's all the same idea, trying to correct these things we want to be looking at in the future as projects. Both of those were areas that we talked about as part of Clean Lake stuff, so...
Now, an engineer question. You have the swales on either side. How do you channel the water to them?
Rain bar.
Keeps the water from going straight down into the only...
Yeah, so the road pitched, right? And then what we would do is we would have a rain bar that's constructed on the side. So you do those a lot on paths and trails, you know, when you have steeper slopes to get the water where you want it to go. So it only can erode in like one small section. You can go back and fill it. It's not, doesn't move as much. And then you're directing all the erosion to something that you can sort of capture and treat.
And if this is water quality, I know I've raised it, but I think you had an answer, but it wasn't given to me just yet. We just got a pile of money from CCF, and I thought that was all for, you know, lake water quality improvements.
It was.
Is it on a certain side of the lake? Is it only good on the other side of the side?
Yeah, so in the Clean Lake Committee, we had all these different projects identified. That was one. So we had an estimate that was done way back. So that was all really for Main Street. That's where it was identified. That's where the friends negotiated. I was involved as well on making some of that happen. So that's how it all kind of came together. So that's where it's intended to be. I mean, we're looking at a bunch of other things now. We're doing sediment testing in the lake, looking at, you know, the algal blooms and different opportunities. Conservation Commission, myself, just had a meeting looking at nano-bubbles as a potential for in-lake treatment options to try to stop, get more of the zooplankton growing and eating all that algae. So we have other things that we're talking about and looking at. So where we land with that 1.3, I mean, I'd like to try to do something significant with it rather than, you know, kind of paper cutting it away. I think we want to come up with something major.
Well, I say here a lot about grants. There's no potential for grant money for this kind of activity?
Definitely is. Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. Definitely is. I mean, I was looking at, you know, we had paths discussed. I saw an issue where we have an existing path and we have other stormwater issues that are there too. I mean, the stormwater stuff could come through another funding source too. I mean, I have stormwater money that I get too, so there's other ways to do it, but this is something I think that makes sense.
So you could do these swales without the ARPA money?
Yeah, and just do the trail if that's what the council wants, you know? I'm open to all of it. Just, I see, you know, a definite, an issue that needs to be remedied. I would probably think about looking at that if I'm in your shoes. But it's your choice on how you want to spend the money. I know you have a lot of other priorities too, so...
Right, it just seems to me that we've moved from paths to bio-retention and swales. And not that I have anything against either of them.
Yeah.
It seems to me kind of a back-engineering way of getting back into the money that was previously allocated for potentially another purpose.
I don't think I would...
Which was going around the cemetery, which isn't going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, definitely can't do that. But again, we were starting at Beacon, a Matt Beacon, seeing this as a need, highlighting it to you to see if you want to spend the funds there. The drainage is definitely something that's been highlighted as well. We would need to do something to get the path through the erosion, right? So that's kind of trying to correct all that.
I got you. Yeah, I'm just pointing out some thoughts. Counselor Cohn.
So this is a path around the cemetery, basically?
That already exists, yeah. So it's Lakeside Ave kind of continues behind, yeah.
The swale, do you think we get pollution from the cemeteries that's going into the lake? Is it...
You definitely get pollution, I mean, you're going to probably have at least some, you know, from the folks that are there, right? I mean, that definitely happens. But, I mean, no, what you end up having is the pollution from the erosion. So at the end, at Beacon, if you walk down there, there's a huge gravel area at the end of the pave, where the pavement stops. That continually erodes and just keeps pushing further into the lake. So the thought is to try to stop that erosion, try to get this so it's stabilized. We have swales on either side, so we can get the water to move where we want it to be and doesn't erode and continually erode the gravel that's there. There you go, yeah.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Bill, I see here that you've estimated the two components at $75,000 combined.
Yep.
Can you give us a sense of what the 360-foot stone dust path would cost versus the two bio-swales?
The bio-swales, I want to say, was in the $20,000, $25,000 range, somewhere around there. Memory serves, I didn't bring my estimate with me, unfortunately, but...
But the lion's share of this is going to be the path, okay? I mean, anyone who's been down in this area, one, it doesn't encroach upon any homes, certainly where it is. It's an existing path. It is used. I think it achieves some of the objectives that we've discussed earlier in terms of being able to have nice views of the lake.
Yep.
And to your point, it's smart construction because it's doing something that's going to improve water quality.
Yep.
Or at least not further deteriorate water quality.
And maintaining an existing piece of infrastructure, right? And you still have a path that's there, so you're kind of maintaining your existing stuff, right?
So I think, given the fact that 75 you're asking for, basically, it sounds like probably 50 to 55 of it would be the path anyway.
Yep.
Right? I think we are keeping it within the spirit of what, you know, we had intended with that. So I'm in support of this for those reasons. And I think it's an important project because any opportunity you have to be able to address these issues of erosion and stormwater management in a meaningful way benefits everybody.
Okay.
Counselor Chines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question if I made a start. With the connection of the path to Lakeside Ave, I know there, you know, it's pretty sort of mangy on that end of Lakeside Ave, both in terms of, you know, pavement crumbling, in terms of, you know, just some areas that have eroded right around sort of the end of the pavement. Is it safe to assume that, you know, kind of cleaning up that connection from Lakeside Ave to the stone dust path would be part of this effort?
Yeah, so looking at it, there's a section where there's a gate for the cemetery. I think that we, there's a section from where kind of the parking area slash roadway ends. We'd probably look at paving that with some other funds, it'd probably be road funds or something to that effect, to kind of fix that. It's a little pull-off area that gets all muddy and whatnot too. We could probably fix that if we wanted to. So it's all up to whatever the council wants me to explore. I'm happy to come up with another proposal there or something. I just need a little guidance on what, how far you want me to take it and what you'd like me to do.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense to think about kind of cleaning up that area. Because, you know, what you don't want to do is spend, you know, some time and money on cleaning up the path, which I do think does need it, and I'm very supportive of this whole concept, particularly given the fact that, you know, there is an inflow benefit to what you're doing at the end of Beacon. It would just be a shame if you have this nice path that it ends in, you know, basically a gravel pit of crumbling asphalt. So, you know, whether it is part of the $75,000 or, again, if it's something where you've got other funds. I know we have other funds that we haven't spent on sidewalks that you're looking at, you know, doing some work and some maintenance on the paths and hall park.
Yep.
However it happens, I would want to make sure that that goes forward as well. I do think, I mean, for folks who haven't walked down the end of Beacon Street, I mean, it's kind of like the Mississippi Delta, sort of like spreading out from the end of that street. And the street itself is like a slide for sediment and contaminants down in the lake. And so I think this makes a lot of sense to move in for. I, you know, I'm sure there are smarter people than I am who could figure out how to measure the contaminated impact of this area. But my guess is it's probably pretty significant. And so I would love to see this move forward. I think this makes a lot of sense.
Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Chair McLean. I concur with Counselor Chines and Counselor Dombrowski. And as somebody who jogs through that area quite a bit, it does get a lot of pedestrian...
It does.
...access. And you have to be very careful from a liability standpoint. We have to be, because it's very easy to trip over there, on the rocks, on the roots that have become exposed. I also like the idea of fixing Lakeside Avenue and Beacon Street. So bear with me here for a minute. We've allocated $100,000 for Lakeside Paths. And then we allocated $150,000 for pedestrian access to the lake cemetery to the Yacht Club. To me, this is a Lakeside path. You've currently spent $11,000 of that money for the survey that we talked about a few minutes ago. So there's $89,000 left on the allocation from November of 2022 for Lakeside Path. If we were to give you that $89,000, would you be able to fix this trail and also make the necessary repairs to Lakeside Avenue and Beacon Street?
Yeah, I'm pretty confident I can get that done. If I need some additional, I can supplement, so...
Because then that way, that allocation of $100,000 would be obligated by the end of this year, the requirement.
Yep.
And then we would separately have to talk about what we want to do about the $150,000.
Sure, yep.
But we could take this right now, this project, and apply the Lakeside Paths, because this is a Lakeside path, runs to it. That would make sense to me.
Counselor Chines.
Can I just ask for a clarification? When you say you can make it work with other funds, like, could you specify, like, what do you think, what do you think the actual price tag is? And the reason I ask is because...
It's right around there, you know? Adding that other section, because that wasn't really what I evaluated was, but, you know, eyeballing it from a couple of sidewalks that I've done, yeah, maybe another $25,000, $30,000, somewhere around there. Um, yeah, maybe another 25, $30,000, somewhere in that range, just to do that small section of paving, ripping it out and repaving that. And again, I also have other work that I'm gonna be, that I'm in the process of bidding right around there. So I can look to potentially get some economy scale with the, you know, with the, with the Hall Park sidewalk slash bathroom slash, um, parking lot too. So with all that, I can.
So you think it's about another 20 to 25, it sounds like about $25,000.
Yep, to do that, yeah. And depending on what we do, I mean, yeah, depending on what, what's done, but yes.
So then, bear with me on my math. So then you're talking 75,000 for this and another 25,000 for, for paving.
Yep.
So you're effectively sort of 10,000 short, given what you've spent on surveying from the first tranche of ARPA funds?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So I, I would maybe suggest, as I, I like, um, like Counselor Vincent's suggestion, but I would maybe suggest that there's an additional 10,000 that we would want to allocate, just to make sure that you do have the funds available. Or I guess, maybe to put it another way, sorry. The 100,000 from the first tranche and maybe there's 10 from the second tranche that we would kind of maintain in this, this bucket. Sorry.
Right, no, thanks for, any clarification is great. Um, Counselor Dombrowski?
Just to clarify, um, if we just allocated the 75,000, you have.
I can do the trail and what's shown here.
Yeah.
Um, or if I'm giving guidance to not use the drainage funds and to come up with drainage funds for that, I, then my, I'll be able to expand more. I just, however you want me to slice the apple, I can slice.
But you can, I guess the bottom line is that you could supplement with, um, stormwater funds and road funds for the other.
I have funds, yeah, we have funds.
You have other supplements, so we, you could achieve the ultimate objectives here with the 75.
Yeah, giving objectives and money here, I, I'll make it work.
But with 75 and the other funds, you can make that work. Yeah, so that, that feels the most comfortable, I think, right? So I'll move, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, I guess we agree to the allocation of 75,000 to address the, the stormwater man, stormwater management and walkway as presented by Mr. Renaud from, uh, Lakeside to Beacon.
Do we have a second? Second.
And this is, this is. Just a point of order on this one. So we've already allocated the money for ARPA. So wouldn't it be that what we're doing when we get to item, what is that, 6A3? That it would just be a question of what do we sort of unallocate from ARPA or reallocate from ARPA?
Well, I suspect if here we're allocating 75 of 150, then there would be remaining 75 to be discussed. And there would also possibly be from the first vote that failed, um, your, your, the situation that failed on the other, that there may be a question of reallocating some of that money. Uh, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair McLean. Yeah, what I was trying to make it easier for us is we have Lakeside Paths, $100,000. Just focusing on that, this is technically a Lakeside Path, because I can see the lake when I go down that path. We've allocated $11,000 and change for the survey. There's $89,000 left in it. We've already allocated this for Lakeside Paths. We, I would like to take the 89,000, but the proposal was 75,000. We could take 75,000 of the remaining 89,000 from the Lakeside Paths and apply it to this project. Then later on tonight, we can talk about the other 150,000 from the pedestrian access to the lake cemetery to the yacht club that we appropriated or that we allocated in, uh, this past March and decide what we want to do with that. But I think we ought to take this one and apply the, some of the $89,000 left from the Lakeside Paths that we approved back in November of 2022. Does that make sense to you?
I'm following everything you're saying, yeah.
So the proposal was, is $75,000, I would say, of the, the 89,000 from Lakeside Paths.
Yep.
From the, 75,000 from the Lakeside Paths, um, allocation that we made would go towards this project.
It's definitely consistent, Counselor Dombrowski, with your motion.
It is, uh, if, if you want to call it a friendly amendment, we can do that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're, we're speaking the same language. We're basically, we have about 14,000 that's going to be.
Yeah.
Unallocated after this vote.
Correct.
If it's successful.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, so the amount that we're talking about then is $88,680, which is the original $100,000 allocation, less the $11,320.
Over 320, I didn't know exactly what that 11,000 was, thanks.
Yes.
Eighty-eight, sixty, sixty.
Correct, yep.
And the other is 11?
Uh, 11,320 is what's already been spent.
You've got that written down, so I don't have to.
It's already, already done, yep.
Alrighty. Um, motion has been seconded.
But I think the motion is for 75. It is.
Motion is for 75.
So I, uh, make a motion to amend the motion, uh, from 75,000 to $88,680.
So just by clarification, a further clarification, that, so you're adding back what, what was left in bucket one, if we will?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and that has been seconded by Counselor Vincent. Any discussion on that? Counselor Dombrowski?
I don't see a reason for this. You're, you've asked for 75,000, you've identified that for this project. You've identified the other, you know, sources that you draw from, right? Go for anything beyond that.
Yep, so I, I think the intent is that it would give us some additional funds towards that little gap area. And I'm, I'm assuming that's what Counselor Chines is talking about.
I'm just wondering what you have in the cookie jar, because it sounded like you said that you can make it work.
We can make it work, we have money in the cookie jar, we do. It, what it is, is, I mean, we look at.
You haven't really learned, not to say that.
No, no, no. Well, we have our drainage, we have our drainage projects, we have our roads projects. It's just a reallocation of priorities, so. I listen to what the council asks us to do. If you ask us to make it happen, it gets, it gets done.
Counselor.
So it, you know, I think the, the rationale for this is I, I think at least you're hearing from me, and it sounds like I don't want to put words in Counselor Vincent's mouth, but, you know, there are kind of adjacent areas here that need some cleanup. And I hear you that you say you can make it work, and this is why I push you to say, well, what, what is the amount that you'd need to make up for? Um, you know, because it is more than the 75,000. And so I think the intention, or at least my intention, you know, with making the motion, is just to make sure that we as a council have sort of line of sight and certainty that, you know, these kind of adjacent areas, you know, at the end of Beacon and Lakeside get addressed with the rest of this as well.
Okay.
As a lawyer and a CPA, uh, I find that I don't always get, you know, final accountings to the penny and don't expect them in this job that I have. That being the case, if this gentleman says he's got the money, I know he's got the money. Um, and, you know, so I, I, I could see merit to both arguments. But right now, we have a motion that was seconded, uh, I'm, I'm trying to keep up with this. Your motion is.
Correct, and Counselor Vincent's seconded.
To amend, so we have a motion to amend that's on the floor, um, that we can vote to add that other bit of money back. Anybody want to further discuss that, or should we vote the amendment to Counselor Dombrowski's motion? Okay, uh, all those in favor of the amendment to slightly increase the funding pursuant to, uh, the motion made by, motion to amend made by Counselor Chines, all those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, those opposed. Two, motion carries. Um, and Sherry, that was negative from Dombrowski and McLean, if you just want that for the record, if you didn't see us live. Okay. Okay, so we have no, resolve that piece for the moment.
Alright.
Okay. Um.
We're good, right?
Uh, sorry.
Are you pointing to ordering me?
Do we need to, do we need to vote on the main motion? So we've amended the motion, but do we?
I think because the amendment was higher than that carries.
Thank you.
Seems like, seems like it would, you know, supersede, but.
You don't have to vote on it.
No.
Okay, then, um, number two was, now that we're done with presentation?
I'm done, yeah.
You're, you're good?
I am good.
Alright, thank you, Bill.
You folks are all good, thank you.
Number two was solar panels for the Galvin Middle School. Just by way of history, we did have, as I mentioned, uh, ARPA request that didn't make it, um, for half of the roof. Now we're hoping to go with the entire roof. Um, Counselor Carney, I know that you weren't on the board when, you know, the council, when we first started the solar concept. Um, but this is a, a project that I think, after the ARPA 500,000 failed, um, there was, I would, I would say almost unanimous support that the idea of following that up would be to go to town meeting with a warrant for an entire project on the Galvin, uh, middle school roof. The solar, as I see it, is a really positive return on investment. The Inflation Reduction Act provides a 30% government rebate, so if you're, you pick up.
Tax credit, actually.
Tax credit, you know, and it's, it's cash to the community. Um, and that would be, you know, on a million dollars, roughly 300,000. Um, there are various things that need be, need to be worked out. The original company that gave me the, um, $500,000 estimate for half a roof, if you will, has now provided another estimate. That doesn't mean they're the company that's going to get this, we haven't gone out to bid. But it was just to let the counselors have a look at one of these somewhat detailed spreadsheets, because a lot of, you know, a lot goes into these busy spreadsheets when you get to the solar. Um, but if you have a quality product, you're basically going to result in somewhere in the neighborhood of a 40, 4-year, I think was our most recent payback period. Uh, with the, taking into account the government rebate, taking into account that we will have a valuable intangible asset called a REC, um, the renewable energy credits that hopefully we'll also get a little more money from, uh, for having those. And the immediate savings, before we even get to the ecological part of this, which is big, um, because the middle school roof is probably one of the premier projects that people are looking at when they're trying to reach their sustainability goals. I mean, this, this is, you know, we've, we've, we've planned well for the new high school, the middle school is solar-ready, but it's been solar-ready for 10 or 11 years. There's a window of opportunity, because the older your roof gets, the less likely it is that you're going to do a solar project. Why? Well, because you don't want to put a 25-year solar project on a 25-year-old or a 35-year-old roof. Kind of common sense. So we're at that period where, um, I'm not saying it's crisis or we have to do it tomorrow, but if we don't do it soon, we probably won't do it at all. Um, the Galvin's been solar-ready for what, Steve, 10, 11 years?
Yeah.
We've had it now. So it's still in that period, that sweet spot where we could go for this kind of project. The federal government with the 30%, uh, deep monetization, direct monetization of the credit has made a huge impact. There are billions of dollars of projects pending right now because of that law. Um, so, you know, there's always political uncertainty, what if it goes away? What if there's a change of, you know, administration, what have you? But these projects are existing in every state in the Union. And every state in the Union has congresspeople and senators. So I'm, I'm a little less worried about that than some other people might be, because, you know, that's a hard thing to take away once you put it into play. And, you know, our largest solar company, solar company in the US, I believe, is in Ohio. It's not in Massachusetts. And a lot of these companies are taking advantage of these, uh, these credits and these opportunities. Anyway, it's something we're working on. We hope to go out to, with an RFP on it, um, talk to the town administrators significantly about it. You know, we'll do, come, do the competitive bidding process. Uh, hopefully, you know, get, get the best bid, taking into account the quality. We're going to have to know the quality of the product, quality of the company, are they going to be around to service it? Um, but we will own it. That is the key here. The way we get the 30% back is we own those, that array that's placed on top of the middle school. Um, part of my argument last time for reallocating some of the funds was that the difference between the 500,000 and ARPA that I tried to do previously and the town meeting is we're going to go to the town meeting, we're going to go to you folks, and we're going to ask for funding. Even though it's a good deal, I think, and even though we're going to get money back from the federal government, it's still going to town meeting and asking for funding, which as we all know, you know, is, is a kind of a different dynamic. Um, so my thought process was, if we had ARPA funds that were not being used in one area, using them as seed money on that plus or minus million-dollar project would be a good idea, because it further increases the payback period by decreasing the cost. And it also says to the town meeting, you know, we did apply some of these ARPA funds as seed money, so there's less money that has to come from the taxpayer, you know, to fund that solar project, which is going to pay for itself. And those electric bills, we got three months of those electric bills some months ago, they are large. So the pay, the payoff in terms of reduced costs, before you even get to the ecological factor, which is, you know, we're trying to be, um, a green community, we're trying to reach our 2050 goals in terms of, uh, carbon neutral. This is, this is a, not a minor step, you know, in, in the positive path towards sustainability. So hopefully, well, I'll be behind it ultimately and we'll bring a, bring that to town meeting. But that's why I had said last meeting that I would entertain a motion, if I got one, and it was seconded, to reallocate the 150 from the second part of that project to the Galvin Middle School solar project as seed money when we go there with the warrant, which we have pretty much unanimously said that's what we are going to do this year. So I think, I thought it was a smart idea, if anybody would make such a motion and entertain it. Otherwise, we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Uh, so, um, so moved. So you're looking to have $150,000 reallocated, of ARPA funds reallocated towards this project?
Yeah, specifically the 150 that, it wasn't necess, it might have been a six-to-one vote, all due respect to Counselor Chines, but a number of us had reservations when we discussed that particular item of going around the cemetery. And since then, the town administrator has reached out and been told in no uncertain terms, that's not going to happen.
Right, and then if the 150 pass, 150 passes, then it, there requests to be 850 at town meeting? That's what you're envisioning?
Do you want me to jump in?
Jump in, because we, we're dicing a lot of numbers here.
It's, it's really, um, much, um, much better than that, much better than that. Because when you factor in the, um, federal, federal tax rebate, okay, which is, let's call it a third, okay? You factor in the, um, value of the REX, the rea.
Renewable.
Energy credits.
Yep.
Um, we would still have to work that out with the MLD. Um, uh, and you factor in the 150, if that is passed tonight, I can see the, um, net cost being around 225, 200, 250,000.
That would be the amount that would be at town meeting?
Right, and, and you knock off the 150. I would go for more, and I'll tell you why. Because the tax, uh, credits would be in the next fiscal year. So that would be, that would, I'd, I'd have to like replenish that later on.
So theoretically, it would be 250 from town meeting plus 150 here, so about 400,000 would be.
Right, and I'd go for a little bit more in town meeting, because I think I'd have to replenish, um, the tax credits in the next fiscal year. So it couldn't be an imbalance on that.
And what would Gas and Light be willing to put up towards that?
I'm, I'm thinking three, that, the, the perspective that we give was, was for the REX was worth 335 off the bat.
Yeah, that's, that's not a solid number though, right?
That would be a negotiation, for sure.
What they would put towards, you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is the, this is the consultant's valuation.
Valuation.
Based on an 80 cent per gallon water, or whatever the standard figure is. Doesn't mean that we would necessarily get that. Um, the flip side of that is, you know, obviously, we're very friendly with the Gas and Light. However, we would be negotiating in this case from the taxpayer's side as opposed to the ratepayer's side. So we'd be trying to get the best deal we could, a reasonable deal for the taxpayers. So if, if, if no deal was even in existence, there's a market for these.
Right.
There's a market for REX, you know, there is a place you can go to sell them if you need to. Um, so I, I, I wouldn't want to focus on the higher figure right now as being a given, that's all I'm saying.
Sorry, just to, but just to clarify, I'm saying, I'm saying, would, what would Gaslight put up towards the initial construction?
TBD.
Installation?
TBD.
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 And you were saying that it would be your, the estimates are?
The estimate of the consultant was.
335.
335.
That's the estimate of, of.
That's the value of the REX.
The estimate of the value.
Go back to them and then the money would flow to us.
Got it, okay. And then the, and then you said it would, it would be break-even within four years? So we'd, we'd save about a quarter million a year in energy costs, is that?
No, but our, our cost after everything was all said and done would be around, you know, maybe 400,000.
So we'd say like 100,000 a year?[1720.01]
Yeah. It's like eighty, eighty-five to ninety thousand a year would be the electrical savings.
Okay.
On that.
Right, there's a column for each of these in the spreadsheet, and I just, I don't say rely on it as if it's gospel because they're based on estimates, but solar's been being done in this country for decades. You know, certainly many more projects in recent years. So, I mean, these are estimates based in, conservative estimates based in some fact, you know, and this is a solar-ready building too, which is also a good thing in terms of plugging in.
Yep. What's, what's the total current electrical cost?
What were we seeing monthly, Steve? It was a large sum. I don't know if you have those bills in front of you?
I don't have those bills. Yeah. I don't have them, John. Let me check. They came separate.
Yeah, we can, we can get those and forward them around.
Be interesting to know relatively.
Yeah. Yeah. Just trust me, they were big. Yes.
It's a huge building.
Mr., through you, Mr. Chair.
To Mr. Mayo. Could, could we just clarify the cash flow piece of it? So for the, the, the tax refund, my understanding is that we would effectively need to front the cash to put the solar on the roof.
Correct.
So is?
Let's walk through those numbers a little bit for me. I just want to make sure.
Let's say the whole cost.
Like, are we bonding like a larger amount upfront?
I, I wouldn't bond it.
Or are we taking it out of free cash?
I would do it out of free cash.
Okay.
Let's say the whole cost is a million dollars for the entire cost, okay? You'd knock off a hundred and fifty from the ARPA funds.
Yep.
So we're down to eight fifty. You'd knock off for the R E Cs, three fifty.
So you'd presumably negotiate that upfront?
We're not going to negotiate that, that's all presuming that happens.
So you get the cash from, say, W N G L D to fund that?
Exactly. Exactly. So now we're?
So you're at five?
I'm at five, okay? The tax credits would be around three hundred thousand, okay? So then I would say that brings us to two, right? So I would say let's use two, two hundred thousand in free cash.
But we would have to effectively spend the five hundred in free cash upfront?
Exactly. So that's why I'd go for more. I'd go for more and then get it back.
So the ask at town meeting effectively?
The ask would be, right.
I mean, I know we still have to punish the numbers for this, but effectively would be for a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation with the understanding that A, three hundred thousand is coming back roughly in tax credits, and B, the remaining two hundred thousand honestly is going to get paid off in a pretty small amount of time, given the savings.
For four years, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just continuing to caveat though, Gas and Light could be watching this meeting saying, oh, no. So just, so everybody knows, just total transparency.
The tax credits are, everything in the seminars I've gone to are non-discretionary. So if you, as a municipality, if you do the work, you, you will apply and you will get it, it's part of the Inflation Act, I believe.
Yeah, Inflation Reduction Act.
Inflation Reduction Act. What's interesting enough is that because a lot of communities have this quandary, what do we do? We're going to spend the money now and maybe we'll get it back, and how do you, how do you handle that? I would say we could go for more, and I would do it that way, but we can, we'll be in a place that we can do that. Others may not be. So the state is coming up with a program.
State or federal state?
State, the state. Mass Clean Energy Center, I went to a webinar a few weeks ago where although we, Wakefield is probably too wealthy to get any sort of grant for this project, we would be able to get essentially what's called a, what I would call a bridge loan, they use the term bridge loan, to kind of, they would front the tax credits to you. That was kind of pretty cool. I was saying, wow, that's, I haven't heard that before. They don't have the?
I don't think that's passed the legislature yet.
They, they don't have, well, they're trying to put the program together. This is, this is from the, the state Mass Clean Energy Center talking about it, so.
No, I know that, but I, I know the state was looking at sort of basically using sort of the interest from the state's rainy day fund to kind of front the cash for some of these things. I don't think that appropriation's possible.
But I thought it was pretty cool if they do come up with it. Yeah. That would solve that problem.
No, absolutely. And candidly, I mean, even without the tax refund, honestly, like, I think this is a project that's worth moving ahead because the savings will, I mean, there's a reason, I have solar panels on my house. I mean, it's not?
You'd be increasing from four years to?
I mean, it is the environmental benefit, but candidly, it saves me money on my electric bill, so.
Increasing the payback from four years to seven years isn't the worst thing in the world.
And don't forget the extra credit we get.
Right.
Under the, you know?
So how much power are you selling to the town?
Well, so we use a lot of power in my house, I'm a family of six, but I am buying a lot less power from the town than I used to.
I'm trying to remember where we were. I think you made a motion.
Maybe this year not so much.
Counselor Vincent?
Chair McLean, if, if the discussion's over, I do have a motion that I pre-prepared. Sorry if I read that.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Sorry, I just, can I just talk a little bit about process? So I'm looking at, at the slides. Nobody went through the slides that were part of our presentation. Think this is the second time that I've seen slides about this one company, but I did hear, Chair, you said that we would go out to a bid. I'm just wondering why we keep on getting information from this one company?
The reason we got information from this one company was because when I first looked into this for the half of roof and my request under ARPA, I had reached out to Gas and Light and asked for a couple of consultants, and they weren't really coming up with too many good, you know, good prospects. And the one quote that I did get, I didn't like. It was much higher than what I got from these folks. I actually researched on my own that they are the preferred provider of solar for municipalities in Massachusetts. So when I conducted that research, I reached out to them, it just turned out that they had a representative who lives in Wakefield. And, you know, that's when I started dealing with him and having his people in Hopkins and draw up the arrays and get me a quote. The reason we used them now, and I'll be entirely honest about this, when, when my ARPA request failed last year, I said, okay, you guys take it over. You think it's such a good idea for a warrant? And nobody did anything yet. So I wanted to get the ball rolling again, so I went out to the same guy and he said, the prices haven't changed. I gave you two arrays the last time, half a roof and full roof. I'll just send you the full roof. It's the same price right now. Maybe it'll, maybe it'll be even a little bit better after an RFP, maybe, maybe they go away and they don't even want to deal with an RFP. I can't tell you, but we'll go to, to a full RFP on this. The reason we have this is because somebody had to do something and I've done it. That's the bottom line.
I think the other reason why you hear from this company in particular, power options being part of the presentation, is that the state did pass a law regarding nonprofit energy buying, buying, buying of energy, okay? And if you do not have an M L D, don't have a municipal light department, which we do, okay? It's almost like they created a mini bid list, and this is the company that, that the state has said, they've done all the vetting. It's like buying off the state bid list, which is great because, right, you don't have to go out to bid, you say, this is the lowest price for a police car, and you can do that. So this company is work, is working with Select, Solar Select, they, they are kind of the energy bid list company in Massachusetts. So that's why, you know, they've come in and made the presentation.
But they haven't come in to make that, that's what I want to clarify.
Well, they've come and met with us.
So they haven't come in front of the council? So I just wanted to clarify that, that it's odd to me that we keep on getting materials, but I know certain members, it sounds like, have talked to them and you've talked to them. But I just hope going forward, like, we, it would be great to have them come and talk instead of just reading the documents of them presenting to us.
Well, that's why we've got to bid, because we have an M L D, so.
I have to follow up on that, though. I requested that they be allowed to present during ARPA two for the two million. Counselor Dubrowski said I'd really like to have more information. I said I wasn't allowed to bring it. I offered to bring select, and I was told by the then-chair, Counselor Chines, that I could not.
So as the then-chair, the reason why we did not was precisely because of the bid issue. So I, what I didn't want to do was create a perception that we, as a council, were favoring one vendor over another. The materials were in the packet, so people had them available from an informational standpoint, but the reason I, I chose not to do that was precisely because we did have to go out to bid.
I've been trying, Counselor, I, I, I would simply say that anybody who wants to get involved and take this over, please feel free.
Nobody wants to take it over?
No, please.
I'm just asking about the process going forward. So I just want to make sure that we do have an open process.
I believe what I heard at that time is just a little bit different than what I'm hearing right, right now. It was that that would be the only proposal under ARPA two that had any presentation. And I said, well, that's because I have gone out and obtained it. And it has facts, and it has a payback, and it has a return on investment. But so be it. Counselor?
Could I just like double check? So just, so I understand, like, the timing. So the, can we go out for the RFP before town meeting or does that have to happen after town meeting or how?
Well, I, I like going out because then I know the number better.
Right. So we can do that, though, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 because it'd be subject to funding.
Because I think the only caveat to this would be in the event that this doesn't pass a town meeting, we have a hundred fifty thousand which we need to allocate.
Exactly.
By year, by year's end.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have a problem allocating one, it would never.
I think we should just be mindful of that, though.
Right. But I, but I do think, I do think, you know, I've said this to the town administrator, I think the RFP should be, should be a high priority.
I think it's a good possibility.
Among other, our other very many high priorities.
And as a point of information, I mean, the council did vote to put an article on the warrant.
Correct.
For town meeting. So I think, at least as one of the people who voted for that, my expectation, Mr. Mayo, is that you guys are working on this and we'll have, you know, the information needed to support that article.
We'd like to have a, like a number, a number for it.
Right. But this, all this is, is by way of illustration, this is not the final pick. This is one company that has now dealt with us, you know, and given it, given us their free time to give us, I think, very good estimates, and they've put in the work. But that doesn't mean they're going to get the job.
Correct. And I'm sorry, just with the RFP piece, it would just be helpful to know just from the education standpoint, if there are, like, are they all the same? Do you know what I mean? Like, are, like, are there different, like, variations of this technology, is, you know, are there pros and cons to certain of them? I don't, I don't know enough about it, but it, you know, it would be helpful to kind of have that as a part of the, the RFP process, because it's not like we are just putting out for, you know, certain things where, you know, there's.
Sort of like a school bus, right?
It's not a school bus. It, it's not even like, you know, papers for that matter, you know, like, there's.
Well, one of the interesting, interesting things that's been told to me by the, you know, preferred provider, Soltech, is that, you know, sometimes they don't go for their RFPs because then it, you know, gets more complicated, more paperwork, and maybe they will, maybe they won't. But part of that is too, you know, how comfortable do we feel? I mean, do, do we, if we're not going to go with a preferred provider, we're going to do an RFP, do we need a special consultant? Now we're spending another hundred grand for somebody to tell you, well, this company is, you know, a good company, this company is more likely to follow through. You should be looking at what the product is, you should be looking at what, there should be a power guarantee. I mean, if they're not going to guarantee the power, then that's maybe not the one you want to go with. I believe this company does guarantee power, so those are various factors. You know, what, what's in your array? What, what kind of, what kind of, what kind of equipment are you using? Is it better than or worse than somebody else's equipment? I mean, hopefully, we could do that on our, on our own without hiring a consultant and, you know, we've hired a lot of consultants that haven't always thrown me too, in terms of the work product we get for the money we pay. But if the council thinks we need a consultant, we should hire somebody fast. Because if we're going to do what the town council, as Counselor Chines indicated, voted to do, which was to put out a warrant, we should get busy on it.
I guess I don't know to the extent with the RFP, we can, if there's some kind of measurables or something, you know, that they can kind of include, just so they can kind of educate us with their own numbers, you know, basically, so we have some basis of comparison? Because I don't think it's like the lowest bid necessarily.
Right. It's really a request for qualifications.
Yeah.
With, with the monit.
Because I just don't know enough, I don't know enough about the minutia of the technology, but I, my understanding is that there, with your point, the power guarantee, that would matter, presumably, and things like that. I don't know what else are like the punch list items we want to make sure.
Well, I know this particular provider is, you know, basically a large company, it's backed by a large Canadian pension fund. So, you know, they might, you might feel a little better about them being around for the next twenty years if they have twenty or thirty people working on service out of Hopkins in Mass than you would of somebody else that maybe has a staff of six, you know, in Phoenix. Just some, some items like that in terms of what, what, where is the wherewithal of this company to provide a service contract to us? But we own it, but we're going to want to have a service contract. Yes, Counselor County?
I think we are, you need that we have our own light department, and they probably have some expertise that we, we're going to lean on for something like this. We're not going to be independent of them.
Right, and they have done solar, solar projects, too. This would, the difference, primary difference here is the way we would be doing it to try to obtain that thirty percent by having the town be the owner of that, that large array on the roof. That's the big difference here, we would be the owner.
And the town needs to be the owner.
Must be the owner.
Town must be the owner for, well, you can probably set up a contract that would satisfy all the parameters here, but when you have a building that is under a bond, that is, we've gone out to bid on the bond, that is, you know, tax-free bonds, that if you have another entity owning property or, you know, on the building, like, no matter who it was, bond, they don't like that because you do put your whole non-taxable bond at risk. The discussion I have with bond council, because they almost blanched when they said, you're going to lease this? I said, no, we're going to own it. Well, leasing will be a big issue, don't even do it. I said, okay.
Yeah, there's no lease in this. We own it. So anyway, that's, that's just an update on this, and I, I think we might have had a motion pending a long time ago to transfer the one fifty, although Counselor Vincent said he had a prepared motion. Counselor Dubrowski, I don't think yours had been seconded. Do you want to hear what Counselor Vincent has?
It was not seconded, and I welcome Counselor Vincent's prepared motion.
Counselor Vincent, do you have something?
Thank you. Chair McLean, I move to reallocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds from the pedestrian access to the lake parenthesis cemetery to the yacht club close parenthesis, which was previously allocated by the town council on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four to the solar panel project at the Galvin Middle School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chines. Any discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Chair, and, and maybe Ms. Dalton, you can help me on this one. Did we reallocate the other pieces of that? And I'm, I'm going back to slide eight. So we had, you know, a handful, I mean, a small amount of money from leftover on the W C A T allocation, the Civil War Monument Evaluation Title Searches, Assessment of Historic Structures. We, we did not allocate those last time?
No, we did not. We did not. But I have another motion tonight after this one.
Oh, okay. Well, in that case, I will, my question is answered then, thank you.
Well, part is clearly answered.
Any further discussion on this particular motion to reallocate the hundred fifty thousand? Seeing none, all in favor, raise hand please. Looks like six, zero, Sherry. And Counselor Vincent, did you have some detailed follow-up on work on other smaller amounts?
One, one other. Yes, thank you, Chair McLean.
Thank you.
I move to reallocate the twenty-five thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the Assessment of Historical Structures, which was previously allocated by the town council on March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, to repairing the roof of the West Ward Schoolhouse on Prospect Street.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chines. Any discussion on this?
Same question. Do you have another motion for the remaining pieces or should we roll that all?
I, I don't. I just did these two.
So I would maybe offer a friendly amendment just for the sake of cleaning up, you know, that we add to that twenty-five thousand, the thirty-seven fifty for title searches, the hundred fifty dollars for the Civil War Monument Evaluation, the two hundred thirty-five dollars for W C T expenses.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
I think it is, because there's some chimney work that needs to be done there as well, so that would all do nicely.
So I, I offer that as a friendly amendment if the gentleman will accept it.
I agree with that, yes.
Okay, we have an amended motion by agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor? Sherry, looks like six, zero again. Thank you all. I believe we're now on seven A four, if I have my numbers correct. I'm not sure if I'm looking at the right copy. Memorandums of, or memorandum of understanding, Steve?
Yes, so we talked about this last week, and this is more for the council to have actual, the actual copies, and if you have any questions on it, Tom and I worked hard on these. This is to, because we know that money that the Economic Development Council is going to be working with, million dollars, the $200,000 at the Housing Trust, most likely in both cases, will not be spent by the end of December 2024. The, working with our, our town accountant and our auditors, and looking at what the Treasury has come out with, and I've talked about this before at some of the meetings, if you have a memorandum of understanding, that kind of gives you another two years to spend that money. There are reporting aspects to this, so each of these groups will have to report where they spent the money, but it'll all be handled very nicely with the town accountant's office, where they're going to disperse all the money anyway. So we'll get quarterly updates on that as well, to make sure we move that along. So, this is really for you guys to see. We will be presenting them to both the Economic Development Council and the Housing Trust in the near future. I know there's a lot, if you haven't had a chance to go through them, they've been both vetted through Tom, both through myself, and then Tom corrected all my errors, so he took care of it.
So, basically, nothing for us to do tonight?
Not, not tonight, no, no.
Any discussion from council?
May have, may have not read them yet, so.
Counselor Chines?
So, just a process question. So it sounds like you'll bring those to the kind of other parties effectively to these MOUs, and then come back to us for an approval vote at some point?
Right, exactly. They need to sign them.
Okay, I think, I think that pretty much covers seven A, unless anybody has anything else. Seven B, signage discussion was initially listed approval, but I asked the town administrator because I don't like, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Chair McLean, we also need to go back to item seven. Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee.
Oh, I skipped, I skipped over it, didn't I?
Well, we skipped over it for the benefit of the folks that were visiting us tonight.
Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, we'll hold on to signage discussion, and we'll go back to the HPP Advisory Committee. How do you want to handle this, Steve? If, I'm, I'm seeking your assistance on this one. We're going to take it item by item?
You certainly, I, I, you know, the town council did decide on a certain makeup of the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee. There are more applicants from the public than we were looking for. I think we were looking for three, I believe there were five, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
I did hear that there may be some members that would like to appoint all five, five, which is fine by me, it just would take a vote of the council to do that. We certainly are thrilled to have people volunteer for committees. So I think if you so wish, you could certainly do that, and you could probably take all of them, the representatives from the other boards or councils, in one vote.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we start with a discussion? Because I, I tend to agree also, I mean, front page of the item the other day was looking for volunteers. So, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair McLean. So I have a motion. I move to increase the steering committee membership from 10 members to 12 members, including five members of the public at large.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Sherry, that's six, zero. And now potentially for appointment, do we also need to appoint said members, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you want to move that, Bob?
Well, no, because you have to appoint the members of the town council.
Okay, I'm, I will, I am appointing, to everyone's surprise, Counselor Robert Vincent to the HPP, and also Counselor Butler, who is not with us this evening. You want to make a motion now that you remember?
I do.
On the, on the five individuals, perhaps? Maybe we can-
It's more than five, isn't it?
Well, or we could, we could do the five separately.
I don't know how you want to do that, along with the Housing Authority and the Council on Aging and the Affordable Housing Trust, we have to appoint all those folks as well.
Yeah, why don't we appoint the five individuals and all other individuals who have applied from the specific groups? Is that-
Some of you.
Well, no, Steve, okay.
Yeah.
I made my own motion, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? That's great. Thank you, folks. Six, zero, Sherry, everybody is approved. Are we good on that, Bob? I think we've covered the whole-
Yeah, that's fine.
Item note that I passed over. Thank you very much for your help there. Signage discussion was originally of signage approval, but I wanted us to talk about all this first, so it's changed to signage discussion. Number one law ready, is the distance between motors and bicyclists. I think we're all very familiar with that. That's the four-foot buffer required by the general laws, which I will not quote chapter and verse to you right now, because I don't have it in my head. Steve, you had indicated there might be some signage wear and how much, you know that I'm a sign pollution guy, so-
Yeah, I know, I know you are.
I don't want one every 10 feet.
We did, we can get them from Mass DOT for nothing. Mass DOT is giving them out. We would put them, I know Bill's very graciously hanging around here, we would probably put them at every entrance to town. You know, so down on Salem Street, down on Main Street, down on North Ave, Lowell Street.
This is where it's not kind of at all.
Right, but it's just as people come in, Prospect Street, what have you. So when you go there, you're going to see it.
What is that, about a dozen, 20? Did you do it here?
Uh, we did, we did it a while back. I don't know if it was on the agenda tonight, but I want to say 17 or 18, I think, total. That's where all the streets are coming in.
How about you come back to us with the number, and we'll vote it at a subsequent meeting? Is that good with everybody?
I can get it to you in a couple minutes, if you want me to-
Nah. We'll come back, yes.
Just a question. When you talk about those main roads, does that include any roads where you've got sort of bike routes connecting in from other communities? I mean, I'm assuming like Main Street coming in from Melrose and so forth.
It would just be every street, wouldn't be necessarily the ones that have the bike lanes.
No, I know, it sounds like it's more than just those, but I just wanted to make sure that at a minimum, it includes those streets where you have bike routes that actually come into Wakefield. Okay, thank you.
Right, for, for example, if you were intersecting Jordan and Albion, you wouldn't have one there. You would have one at Albion where you were crossing into the Wakefield Town Line. Yeah, we can, we can put these in another meeting, though. This meeting's moving on. And number two is just playgrounds regarding dogs. And Steve had mentioned, you had mentioned these in a tan. I did look at the tan, I didn't immediately respond, but the response in my mind was that we have a bylaw, people should be leashing their dogs, and if they're not doing it, my answer to assign might be a little different than getting a sign. It might be sending a town employee out and giving them a warning, and then maybe even writing a ticket. As Esther Noel used to say, unleashed is unloved. If you can't control your, your pet, you should, you should know your pet's proclivities and be able to keep the pet leashed. I don't, it's just my own personal feeling. Comments from the councils, do we need signs where you're any, you know, leashing your dog? And if so, how many signs and where do they go? Because we have a lot of parks, we have parks by the lake, and I tend to refrain from wanting to put for other signs by the lake. Counselor Chines?
So, just to clarify kind of the scope of the request, so the memo, Mr. Mayo, refers specifically to playgrounds, so is that, so, rather than, I mean, we're not necessarily talking about parks, but sort of playgrounds, aren't we?
Right, the biggest problem we have currently is probably Molten is number one, I would say Sullivan is probably number two. And in Molten, there is a, there are certain individuals that are, say, a little bit not as thoughtful as others, and are giving our, our head of parks a real tough time when he happens to go down there, because a lot of things happen. These, you know, these dogs are led to roam free, which they shouldn't be, number one, on those parks. They're not picked up after, number two. They, they do run up to our employees when they're doing work, number three. And when we talk to them, and we will send out our animal control officers, well, a lot of them will say, well, where's the sign? I mean, you're right, we don't have to have a sign, but I think it does help as a deterrent to, personally, I've found over the years. So I think there's some people that aren't as cordial as they were years ago that are being talked to.
Was the sign going to stop them, or is a ticket going to stop them?
I think, I think a sign does give a little bit of a deterrent. If the sign is right there, we can point at it. And I think a ticket will, will also help, but we chase them down and go after them. And I tell you, we go to their homes, because sometimes we don't, you know, there isn't a, you know, there isn't a higher-up person there to do it sometimes, you know? If there's a, one of our DPW guys that's mowing the lawn, and he's not going to go chase them over there, right? And they, and I'll tell you, we get a lot of, there's a lot of lip, for lack of a better word, given to Dennis in particular. He, he believes the signs would help. I support him.
So, if, if I may misinterpret-
We've got on the fence, we've got on the fence.
It sounds like the sign, at least in a couple of targeted areas, would really be to sort of effectively give our employees some cover, so that when they do have someone who's giving them a hard time, they have something else that they can point to.
Right. I, I think it would be, could be a help.
Could it be a certain number of limited signs in those two areas you talked about? Is those the hotspots?
I would start with the hotspots, I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, how many signs?
So I will say that I, I see it at JJ Round all the time.
Yeah.
That was the one you listed, and then I personally got, I've gotten complaints about, by the, the, not the Hurst School.
Dolby?
What's the, what's the school by me in Greenwood, the?
Oh.
The Yule.
The Yule, okay.
The, the field there, so I've, I've had like personal complaints in the last couple of months about people just having their dogs off-leash over there. So I, I think it helps, it helps people, just, you know, everyone kind of being aware of what their roles are.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Like, when I saw this, like, this is a lot of words on a sign for folks, and I'm just wondering if there's not a better way we could do it, where if we could come up with a little prototype that just said, you know, dogs must be leashed, you know, cleanup after your dog or something, and then just in small print had like the, the bylaw reference, you know? Because you see that often, and let someone just Google it if they're, you know, curious about what it is.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to have sign pollution, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, because I'm just picturing like, this is going to be like a big sample, someone's writing, it's just going to be a lot. So maybe we could think about if there's a way to kind of design something that's basic and simplified.
Yes, I can, I can, I can come back with that, future meeting, a little bit different, sure.
Okay, you okay, Steve, with putting that off?
I'm okay, yep.
We'll get, get back to that in another meeting.
Yep.
Item C is yours, Mr. Mayo, refund you a bond authorization.
This one, I would, I would hope to get a lot of happiness about, on this one. So, you know, we, we look at our bonds that we've taken out, and we got, we got great, great rates on the, on the Galvin School. However, as, as you know, we do stagger them, because A, we don't want to be paying interest on money that we're not using, and there is a certain, we also have to be careful of what's called arbitrage, that you really, you must spend down money that you municipal bond quickly, and usually with the school that happens quickly. Don't want to get caught with any penalties for that. So anyways, we have a, a number of bonds that we took out in July of 2013 for the Galvin. It's about 16,000, 16 million, excuse me, which was 16,000, about 16 million worth of bonds. They'll be paid off in 2038. And so we've been watching to see where, what's happening with the market right now. And a good time to do it is when we're going out to continue to borrow money for the high school, which will be going out, and I'll be bringing bonds back for about 85 million in our, sometime in September. So we'll be going out shortly. I'd like to go out to refund these bonds, and we feel right now that, given where market conditions are right now, we probably will be saving about $850,000, and that's directly to the taxpayer. Wish that was in one year, but that's over the life of the, but that's still okay, I'll take it. So I think in the packet is the motion that I would love to have. Now, if we go to market and I come back in and something was crazy, we don't have to do it either. This just authorizes me to kind of fill out a, I guess, a refunding application, and bring it back in.
Would you happen to have a motion?
I do.
Counselor Chines?
I do, unless Vice Chair Dabrowski would like to-
Or Vice Chair Dabrowski. This is just saving money, so we shouldn't have too much to argue.
Right.
So, do you want, I'll read the whole thing, Steve, would you prefer?
Yeah, I would, I would say yes.
So I move that in order to reduce interest costs on outstanding debt, the town is authorized to issue bonds or notes for the purpose of refunding all or any portion of its bonds or notes that are outstanding as of the date of this vote, including if any, the payment of any premium and accrued interest associated therewith, and all other costs incidental and related thereto, under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of Mass General Laws, or any other enabling authority.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second relative to enabling the town administrator to save money on interest on bonds if he can. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Looks like we have all six, Sherry. And it looks like we may have in the next item, a donation from the Council on Aging. Anybody have that on their computer?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Move to accept a donation of $150 to the Council on Aging from various donors with thanks.
And seconded by Counselor Carney. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Looks like six, zero again, Sherry. And item eight fiscal warrants, I think Counselor Vincent-
If we have, they're actually nine B's.
I'm nine B, my gosh, I'm looking at the early version.
Yep, move to accept donations in the order of $24,550 to the BB Library from various donors with thanks.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Butt. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Looks like we have six, zero again, Sherry. All right, yeah, what's next on the agenda?
For 10 warrants.
10 warrants. And I just have to say, Counselor Vincent, that having heard Counselor Dabrowski read that last bonding warrant, motion, I think we have a good replacement for you in warrants eventually.
No.
Here they are, right? Okay, so before I start on the warrants, we used warrants 53, 54, and 55. Normally, we just use the odd numbers. These are cleanup warrants for the end of the fiscal year, and we use for any invoices that arrived after June 30th, but are dated for the prior year. Okay, so, and the other part about this is you go through the warrants, and there's a lot of small items for the town council. I'm not going to read those tonight, but I did verify with the accounting department every single one of the items that were town council expenditures, and there, a lot of them are small dollar figures, but I've got a good accounting on those, so I'm fine with those. But if anybody has any particular questions about the town, town council expenditures, you can ask me. Warrant 53, 1.701,963,082 cents, most of it public works, schools, and fire department for equipment and payroll. Warrant number 54, 733,684,75, most of that schools and public works. And the last one for the last fiscal year, number 55, that's 926,365,96 cents. Most of that was public works, and a lot of that public works was for paving. All right, then we move on to warrant articles one, two, and four. The reason we used all three there, some departments have time-sensitive invoices to be paid at the start of the new fiscal year, and they're paid in warrant number one, which I'll read in a second, and two and four are just part of the normal biweekly warrant schedule. Warrant number one is 2.298,345,015 cents, most of that, the significant number of that is the light department. Warrant number two is 3,717,162,13 cents, most of that's from the treasure department and the light department. And warrant article number four is 3.779,701,025 cents. A lot of that is the group insurance adjustments, and the treasurer, but what I will note for town council, is that's $40,000 there, and that was the ARPA money for the food pantry. So they, they got their ARPA money, I know they're very happy with that. That's all I have in warrants, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Item 11, approval of minutes. These are the July 15th, 2024 town council minutes. Any discussion on the minutes?
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I was just reading them, and I saw that Judy was supposed to come back with the open space and recreation plan, I'm just wondering why that wasn't on the agenda?
Yep, we were told that, I think, the town administrator indicated that the, the consultant had not gone back to them yet, so it wasn't writing.
The corrections weren't made.
So?
I, I would hope, maybe the next meeting, they're hoping? Do you know, Sherry?
Last time, the consultant still hasn't gotten anything back to them yet, but there was vacations involved too, so hopefully sometime in, in September.
So I move that we approve the town council meeting minutes from July 15th, 2024.
The second.
Seconded by Counselor Chines. Any discussion further? All those in favor? Six, zero, Sherry, motion passes. Number 12, announcements. Any announcements from the councilors tonight? Counselor Chines?
Just a couple of announcements. First, want to extend a welcome to a new member of the Health and Human Services Department, Liz Parsons, who's taken over as the manager for Prevention Wellness and Youth Services. I had the opportunity to meet her in my role as liaison, and just was very happy to have her on board, really energetic and really committed to the mission of what we're trying to do, and I think will be a great, a great addition to the team. On the other hand, we do have to say goodbye to Brendan Kent, the Wakefield Public Schools' Athletic Director, who is leaving us to take an assistant principal role in another community. You know, certainly the success of our, our sports teams at, at Wakefield High speak for themselves, but I, I think more than that, you know, Brendan's done a really good job of just building a culture of teamwork and respect among sort of all of the athletic programs of the Wakefield Public Schools. And, you know, when we think about the fact that our, our role, you know, as a community, you know, with regard to the schools, is to raise, you know, a tremendous generation of young people, the work that he's done, the coaches that he's brought in have been a, a big part of that. So he's a tough loss, but we wish him the best of luck, and who knows, maybe he'll be back at some point. And then finally, just wanted to update folks a little bit on the Wakefield Memorial High School project. So people may have read, we did hit really sort of our first snag in the project with regards to the, the gym floor of the current building. There is a drainage pipe, or there was, a drainage pipe under the existing gym that had been shown to have been removed in the original plans from when the gym was constructed had been shown to have been removed in the original plans from when the gym was constructed in the 70s. It turns out it was not, and so with all of the other work happening on the site, it resulted in flooding of the existing gym floor. Because of another nuance of how the gym floor was constructed, which in talking through this with the permanent building committee and the project managers, is not the way anyone would ever construct a gym floor today in this day and age, but because of the way it was constructed, the result of the flood was not something that could be cleaned up, but it did actually permanently damage the floor. So the upshot is, thanks to the quick work of the permanent building committee and bond or contractor, the floor is being replaced to the tune of about $290,000. The good news is, this is why we have contingencies in big building projects, so it does come out of the builder's contingency, but obviously tough news and just an unfortunate set of circumstances that, you know, through no fault of the designer or the contractor or anyone working on the site, was something that happened. So just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. They do expect that the floor will be replaced in time for the fall sports season, which is good news. And again, really quick work by the contractor and the permanent building committee on making sure that this was addressed so that we didn't lose time and lose the sports season.
Any other announcements from the counselors? Just one brief one I would make, just so we know that it's coming at some point. As a preliminary matter, the FOLQ, I think many of us were at their annual meeting this year and saw a presentation relative to fishing lures and certain waste around Horn Pond and what Wuburn has done about it. So they'd like to come to us, so don't be surprised if you see them on an agenda for a future meeting, just to see whether the town council will authorize them to talk to the DPW about, you know, where in Wakefield we might provide some of these. And again, I don't want extra signage and I don't want extra stuff by the lake, but this might be something that we would consider as being a good thing, because you can have these PVC pipes where people can deposit their lures and their hooks and, you know, so they don't wind up in the lake. And they've had success with this around Horn Pond. So they just wanted to come and, FOLQ wants to come and present that idea to us at some future meeting. So just so you're not surprised when you see it on a proposed agenda. But it'll just be a preliminary discussion. Any other announcements? Seeing none, I would go to item 13, matters not anticipated for the agenda.
Mr. Chair, in light of Counselor Butt pointing out that the minutes for the last meeting could say we would be taking up the Open Space and Recreation Plan tonight, I would move to extend the tabling of that discussion to our September 16th meeting?
Sure, with the understanding that we can't control the consultants.
Understood, and if we don't have it, obviously, but, you know, just given that it is in there with the date certain.
Sure, can we do that by fiat, Steve, or should we have a...
I think the only issue is with the date.
I was going to ask you about that, because we have TBD, and I know we had sent out an email about changing some dates. Is the 16th our next date, I guess, is what I would ask, and I'm not trying to put you off here, Counselor Jones.
No, I thought that was our next meeting.
He's kind of tied together.
Well, our schedule that was put out earlier was the 9th and the 23rd, correct, Sherry?
Yes, correct.
And hopefully, you know, we're going to be going out to bid, we're definitely going to be going to bid for 85 million for the high school. That bond, you know, paperwork where we have that very long, you know, motion to read and hopefully it's a great rate, would be ready to be heard on 9/16, not 9/9. So we were talking to the chair, Sherry and I, about what do we want to do with dates? Do we want to have a meeting the 16th and the 30th, or the 16th and the 23rd, or the 9th and what have you? So our regular scheduled meetings are the 9th and the 23rd. I know that people like to schedule in advance, and that's why Sherry's great about putting them out, because, you know, early so you can do your schedule. But I will, do need to meet on the 16th on the bonds, and I'm sorry to do this to you. That could be a single-issue meeting, and then I'll have to run around, and we could do it by Zoom, then I'll run around and get the signatures, but that's, we wanted to see where the council was on that.
I thought we were proposing the 16th and the 30th.
Right, but I think that there was some people couldn't make the 30th, I think that was an issue.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
So in light of that, maybe I will amend my motion just to table this to our next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Can I just maybe just instead suggest that we just, if we're going to need to have a motion on this, we have, we have that brought before the council as soon as it's available, because we don't, we can't control the consultant. And so at the earliest opportunity.
Right.
I don't know that we need a motion to that effect, but I think we understand the intention here, but a motion, so I move that we have it whenever it's available to be presented.
So that's a friendly amendment.
You second that?
Yes.
You're okay with that? All those in favor? Okay, we had 6-0 on that one, Sherry. What are counselors feeling about these meeting times and dates? I'm a little puzzled because, you know, this bonding thing did come up and it kind of changed it to the 16th, and I don't want to have a meeting if we're going to be missing two of the seven.
I would prefer to have a Zoom meeting on the 16th and then have the signatures circulate around.
And still have our usual dates, 9 and 23, that we had already signed up for.
Two, one item meeting.
One item, just for the bonds.
By Zoom.
By Zoom.
Right.
Evening.
What time?
Daytime, evening.
Seven.
I would schedule that too.
Seven?
We could do it earlier for one meeting if you want.
I mean, Ms. Dalton noted that everyone seemed to be available at 7:00. I mean, it'll be a short meeting, why don't we just do it at 7:00?
Let's just do it at 7:00, we'll get it done. So our next regular town council meeting will be, as previously announced, right, Steve, 9/23?
9/9.
Or 9/9, 9/9 and then 9/23, yeah.
Yeah.
And 9/16 will just be the Zoom meeting for the bonds.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And then again, 9/23, which is the...
9/23, right. Seems like we have that. No one's objecting to those. Okay, great.
I'll be on Zoom on the night, because I'm on vacation. That's why I like the 16th and the 30th, but I'll be there on the night.
If that concludes matters not anticipated, then I believe we're at 14. Accept the motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn a very full meeting in two hours and 36 minutes.